What day is it? November 8th, Tuesday, our very first Tuesday meeting and our first one o'clock meeting. I was feeling a little rushed today because it was early. Councilor Kai, you already have a request to make motion. We're not even thirty six seconds into the meeting. I was actually gonna uh to do attendance first. Is Councilor Jolly online? She's not online. Okay, so everyone did attendance in person, Councilor Jolly absent. I was gonna actually look to Councilor Hughes to make the motion because she wanted to add in the camera. So go ahead.
Oh, you want me to do it? I just wanted to, I don't, I don't mind if Mike does it. I don't want to break the streak. Not Mike, Ken. Just stop both feet in the corner of my eye. I don't, well, you know, Mike did it last time and now the, now the record's broken. I'd like to just add ten point two council dialogue at the end of the in-camera session. That's it. Thank you.
Okay.
As amended. Thank you.
All right, you got that ledge? Okay, all right. I'll call for the vote on that. I'm pretty sure. Give me your hands, just so I know. Last thing in favor. Okay, while they're figuring out, we can, we can move on. So that passes unanimously. I think every one of the presentations I have registered are for the public hearing at two o'clock. Public hearing, public. Yes, so we have no registered speakers. So obviously therefore no business arising from that. Consent agenda. You want to do consent? Okay, go ahead.
There we go. The recommendations and the following agenda ports be approved. Six point one regular council meeting minutes October twenty fourth, twenty twenty two, and organizational meeting minutes October twenty fourth, twenty twenty two.
That's just the minutes. Okay, perfect. Call for the vote. Voting's closed and that passes unanimously. Done. Minutes for consent. We have a short agenda today, guys. So the first thing on our agenda is seven point one, which is an emergent funding request. Do we have Donnie online with us?
Yes, we do your worship.
Okay, all right, Donnie, go ahead.
I do have a presentation that I'll share my screen in a moment. Is the presentation coming through?
Yeah, no.
Sorry, it's taking a bit of a while.
As I said, it's not a huge agenda, so we can take our time.
Okay. I hope it's showing up now.
It does. Yeah, go ahead, Donnie.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. This presentation is a summary of the agenda report in front of you With a request to fund hundred and four thousand to its detailed design of the bridge infrastructure Range Road two fifty five. So purpose of the report, we are providing a little bit of background on the status of the update of the Range Road two fifty five bridge structure and the resultant road closures we have completed. And also present to council with some engineering solution options. And also a list of re-prioritized planned RMR work for twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three to enable completion of Range Road two fifty five bridge in twenty three. And a request for additional design scope for two fifty five bridge to fund from the capital fund, capital reserve about in the order of hundred and four thousand to provide also expected additional funding requests, almost like a heads up council.
Right, yeah.
Her slides aren't advancing.
Okay, were they supposed to be?
Yeah, they should be.
I thought she was still introducing. Okay.
No, it's like I think she's.
Donnie, you might want to unshare and reshare.
I will do. Does it show purpose of the report at this point?
We always use your first, your first slide.
Our first slide. Sorry, let me unshare and reshare back.
It's really pretty, though. And maybe if you get there, now we're on to the second slide, and you might want to do slideshow view because we can see all the slides down the side. Which drives Council Mackay crazy.
Is it showing the second slide, purpose of the report now?
We still see the slides on the side and it's now we're here on the first slide.
Okay, let me unshare and do it again.
We'll reset.
Is it showing now the slide two? It's starting resharing. No, okay.
Are you in, are you in City Hall?
I am, yeah.
Yeah, you could come into chambers or if you send it to Sean.
Okay.
He can do it as well.
Okay, let me try that. Sorry about the delays.
That's not a problem. Are you sending it to Sean?
I am, right now. Give me one more moment. It's being sent to Sean.
So how was everyone's night last night?
Okay, it's in Sean's inbox right now. Sorry.
I was at the RMA conference today and Rick Killier was the keynote. And he had a slide that said, it said, had the Maple Leafs pin and it said, when I die, I want the Maple Leafs to be my pallbearer so they can let me down one more time. He was very funny. He was really good.
Sorry, worship, I might, Donnie, we've not received it yet. We're kind of working through it.
Yeah, we'll take five minutes, stand up, everybody do some squats. Donnie can sit right there.
I'm trying to share one more time, see if it works.
I used to work in a big environmental lab and running mass spectrometers and gas spectrometers and when they stopped working, I would unplug them. Replug. Worked every time. Reset. Okay, Donnie, we're on slide two.
Slide two. So am I showing this screen? I think I am sharing now, right? So I will advance the slides as well. Okay, slide two, purpose of the report. So we were at third bullet. And then the fourth bullet says we are here to request for addition of design scope for Range Road two fifty five bridge. Asking for funding for hundred and four thousand in twenty twenty two and also to provide expected additional funding requests in the range of six hundred and seventy two thousand plus or minus twenty percent for reconstruction of the Range Road two fifty five bridge in twenty twenty three. That's just like a heads up. So into the background, the city inherited the two fifty Range Road two trebridge structure as part of the lands annexed from Sturgeon County effective January first, twenty two. City inspections of the infrastructure, including any bridges, were not part of the scope of annexation project. Such detailed analysis is typically not completed as part of annexation. Assets inherited from annexation were incorporated into the city's asset management processes and procedures. And as such, the bridge structure inclusive of Range Road two fifty five were scheduled for condition assessment and inspection in twenty twenty two. Following the scheduled inspection of Range Road two fifty five bridge on September twenty eighth, a partial closure of the bridge was initiated because of identified concerns about the bridge's structural integrity. Upon this inspection, initial inspection, the condition allowed for a portion of the bridge to remain open were closure, were the closure of the southbound lanes, reduction of the allowable loading on the bridge to three tons, and also performing monthly inspections to monitor the site and evaluate the effectiveness of maintaining the bridge as partially open or to identify further responses to address any changes to the bridge condition. So those were the conditions under which the partial closure was initiated. On October eleventh, a bridge inspector was on site performing an updated inspection and witnessed a water truck with a gross vehicle weight of twenty three point four tons, which is well beyond the bridge load restriction of three tons. Were using the bridge, thus emphasizing a risk associated with maintaining the bridge in operation where a restriction cannot be actively enforced. The intent of the partial closure was to provide some level of service to maintain the access and connectivity while a response plan could be developed and work initiated to repair the bridge. The posted loading restriction was critical to allow the bridge to remain in service and the known influence of the condition not being adhered to results in the city being liable and puts public safety at risk. So a detailed holistic bridge assessment was completed by Associated Engineering, who's a consultant on the bridge on October twenty fifth, twenty twenty two. The report incorporated following controlling factors to evaluate the different repairs and replacement strategies. The conditions included evaluating the structural condition, the roadway geometry, geotechnical considerations, hydrotechnical considerations, environmental considerations, traffic accommodation, utilities and future development. Before presenting the engineering solution options, a current state of the bridge location, a closure detour, and some pictures are shown here. So the first map, the map that you see in front of you is the location of the bridge and the bridge closure and the green line indicates the detour map. This particular slide includes the image of various structural components of the Range Road two fifty five bridge, which is indicating the, the concrete girders, the timber struts, the timber pile cap, the back for wing wall sheathing and timber piles. This image indicates the various structural components of the Range Road two fifty five bridge. Sorry, I might have gone one slide forward here. This image indicates a south abutment, how it's contributing to the overall instability of the bridge performance. The supporting timber piles and wing wall sheathing are again twisted and delaminated, indicating severely deteriorated condition. This image indicates the condition of the substructure, showing twisting and splitting of the timber piles, including rotting from within. So ultimately, with the engineering report that we have received, it explores three options. One is bridge rehabilitation, that is attempting to repair the existing structure, which is estimated to be about five hundred fifteen thousand dollars, and that would give us an estimated life of investment only for ten years, which means we have to come back and replace the whole bridge sometime in twenty thirty three. Second option is the bridged replacement with the standard bridge, similar to what we have today, which is estimated to be about one point two one million and estimated life of investment is about seventy five years. Option three looked into replacing it with the color word, not a bridge structure. Pretty close to the option two dollars, one point one two four million and estimated life investment is fifty years. All these components are with plus or minus twenty percent accuracy, and we haven't added the additional inflationary cost that will come up when we actually tender the bridge after design. So in comparison to option one, option two provides greater life expectancy for a higher initial investment. However, option one will require the highest investment in a moderate timeframe. In, in addition, option one will require higher levels of monitoring and future design and construction costs. In comparison to option three, option two provides an anticipated additional life of twenty five years at a nominal additional investment of eighty six thousand dollars. Option three possesses a higher level of risk and uncertainty with the required hydrological studies and environmental studies, which are not anticipated to its full scale in option two due to existence of standard bridge structure at present. Therefore, the recommended solution is option two as it's most cost effective in the long run and have the highest NPV. So subject to regulatory approval and funding approvals from council, the anticipated timelines to restore the services for Range Road two fifty five bridge is presented here. If all goes well as planned, we should have the bridge in service by Q three, Q four of twenty twenty three. That means the engineering and design work to be started now with, with the potential approval of the budget, funding approval to be finished by Q one and then request for construction funding will come, come in front of council sometime in Q one, end of Q one, early Q two, twenty three, and then the procurement of construction services right after that, enabling us for a potential construction completion by Q one, Q three, sorry, Q three, Q four of twenty twenty three. Now, all this is potentially possible due to quick turnaround of the list of re-prioritized and resequenced RMR bridge work plan for twenty three, twenty four. Approved available budget for twenty twenty three bridge program is works out to be about one point zero eight million, including the carry forward from twenty twenty two, expected carry forward from twenty twenty two. So the total value of work not recommended to be delayed in twenty three is about five hundred and fifty four, sorry, five hundred and forty five thousand. And that pertains to the list that you see on the slide here is we are not recommending to delay any of the annual bridge inspections and high priority remedial work. Current street bridge and the north hood slope and retaining wall repairs has to continue in twenty twenty three. What that we can think about differing by another year is the Sonoma Trail River Bridge Crossing in the North Hood Slope and retaining wall repairs and also the children's pedestrians repair, bridge repair. So with all that deferal and continuing recommendation forward, we have total value of work that may be deferred to address emerging Range Road two fifty five bridge by about four hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So remaining fund available after the high priority work is done is five hundred and thirty seven, nine hundred nine hundred thousand dollars, which will contribute towards the savings in twenty twenty three. So administration is requesting an additional hundred and four thousand to complete the engineering design work in twenty two as we have committed remaining from, from remaining funds from twenty two to high priority items. Completion of engineering and design for the bridge structure, which is option two, will inform on final request of funding required for construction. However, applying the current construction estimates of one point two, the estimated remaining valuable value of funds required for reconstructing Range Road two five bridge will be six hundred and seventy two thousand additional in twenty three with the differal of project listed here. And administration will bring this construction funding request forward sometime in Q one, Q two, twenty three. So with that, for the recommendation in front of council today is the budget for project number four two two four one three, which is the RMR bridge program, be increased by a total of hundred and four thousand and that the increase in budget be funded from the capital reserve. Please note that once informed by completed design, administration will bring forward the request for funding for construction phase in early twenty three. That concludes my presentation and I would be happy to take any question. I also have Faisal Kanji, infrastructure engineer, online to answer any bridge specific questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Donnie. It's never fun to deliver bad news. Sucks. All right, I've got a whole bunch of questions waiting. So Council Hughes, you're up first.
Thank you. Um, so if we can go back to the slide where you have the map where it shows all the range roads and everything. But what I'm wondering is how popular is this road? Like, how much traffic are we actually impeding by having it closed for this year?
Through the chair to Councilor Hughes, do you still see the slides on the screen or no?
I still, I see the slides on the side because Council Mackay really loves that and I can only see your concluding page.
Okay, let me bring the map up here.
I don't care, but it's, there you go. That's good enough. We can see it. Just so we're all like on the same page of what you are showing. So I just, what, how busy is this road and how bad is it that it's closed for a year or could it be even closed longer? Like, how many people are we even servicing with this?
Yeah, I, I through the chair to Council Hughes, not heavily trafficked road is the background information that I have, but Faisal may have additional stats in terms of counts of vehicles there. Faisal, if you are available.
Because what I'm trying to figure out is if we actually need to repair this, so we just should just close it at that place until we have like a better time to, certainly we could get the design work done, but I'm just not sure about the second phase, which I know will be next time's decision. But we are, we are pushing off projects like the Children's Ped Bridge, which I think was, needs to be done probably like ten years ago. And if we're doing that at the expense of a rarely used road, I'm just not sure if that's the best way to use our resources right now. So is there any ability between now and when the designs are completed to, because the design will be the design regardless, the road isn't really moving. Because the other thing I'm not sure about is with our long range plans, if this is intended to actually still be a road in ten years' time. We have the NDB coming up next and I'm not even sure if our intention is to expand this road or close this road at that time or just to leave it as is. So I'm not sure about putting a lot of money into something which may have a limited shelf life as far as necessities. Is there a possibility of getting a traffic count and getting more information about how urgent it is to get this particular bridge fixed? Because we are going to have it closed for a year at the best case scenario. So is that a possibility to get that done in the next few months as well?
Uh, through the chair to Councilor Hughes, yes, we can, we can definitely do that. We can look at historical data as well. I guess just as a comment, there's about three or four residents that do live out there and there's a commuting traffic. Uh, and it was heavily used through our, you know, building of our roundabouts on the south and there was construction through the county on the north. So it did put a lot of, it's pretty much what taxed the bridge. Moving forward, I, I guess it's providing that level of service. I can comment that the Children's Bridge, which I know is and mine too, I've been waiting to kind of do that since, since it was brought into my portfolio and I can honestly say that waiting two years, that would be the maximum limit I would like to wait on that bridge before we start losing any further level of service or any lifecycle within that steel deck.
So what I'm hearing is that we were using a lot for construction, but now the usage, it was actually, we were using a lot for construction, but the usage in general has gone down. If it was closed, how would, because it's going to be closed for a year, how are the families that are living? would the, I'm cause it's gonna be closed for a year. How are the families that are living nearby? Can they get in and out? I know there's an inconvenience factor, but can they get in and out with our current plan for the next twelve months?
Yes, they they can. They have a one access, yeah.
And we have it closed, like I see the star and then the red line. Would we need to have it closed all the way from there or does it make any difference for access from people there? Could we just close before and after the bridge? Or does do we need to go from that intersection on just so we don't trap people, so to speak, so they don't have to turn around or what is the thought process behind that and does it make any difference?
I'll be honest, I don't think the map is as accurate as it should be. I believe that it is closer to the bridge that the road is closed. Uh we have hard barricades at the bridge and no one can cross it and there is a private residence that people can turn around, but we're trying to keep the access of turnaround at the bridge site. So it's not a excessive closure on the roadway.
Okay, because that's what I'm thinking is we can get the design, but I the my only concern at this, and this is my last thing, which I'm just hoping you can comment on is we are doing this with the anticipation of not doing those other things. So in the event that we chose to do the design and then we said, okay, we're going to delay the design for twelve more months because we're going to do our other projects now and put this into a stacking block of twelve months or more um behind it and reprioritize. What if we made the decision in March, could we actually even finish those other projects? Because everything goes to RFP, like the, just the way the government works. So are we really making a decision now about design? Um and or can we move forward in all three and then make the decision about which is our favorite um later?
Well, through the chair to councillor Hughes, maybe I can take that question first, Faisal. We will reprioritize again before we come in front of council um sometime in at the end of the design process. So um Faisal may be able to come and I mean maybe hold off on the RFP process for a little while. Uh once we make this final decision and council will get to decide one last time, which one we want to fund and move forward, right? Can all three go forward with the excess funding or not, right? So that's a decision that we can make in Q, end of Q one.
So we can move forward the design today and then we could still potentially, if we chose to delay moving forward with the actual construction, get the children's bridge done next year if you came to us the at the beginning. Is that what I'm hearing?
That's what I'm, yeah, that's what we are suggesting now.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. That's it.
Good questions, councillor Bremanski.
Thank you through the mayor. Um on your number two choice, what would be the weight capacity of that bridge and would it be able to handle the trucks that are crossing now that shouldn't be crossing?
Through the chair to councillor Bremanski, the bridge structure as before it got deteriorated, would have accommodated that uh water truck that was going over. Because of the partial closure, we had to do a restriction on the loading to allow the bridge to continue to survive for another six months while we figured this out. That's why the restriction was in place. Uh so when the bridge get redesigned, it'll be designed for the full loading that was originally planned for the bridge. Which means I, the water track can go ultimately.
Thank you. And then if you do the design currently, would that design be obsolete if you change direction on road development and such out there? Would you need us uh another design further down the road?
Again, depends on the planning. We are considering the future planning parameters into the bridge design so that we don't have a lost cost down the road. Um so Faisal, do you want to add anything to that? Is that being considered as part of the design process, correct?
Yes, I can add that the the standard bridge allows a bit of future development. If we want to widen the road or if we want to uh improve the roadway, obviously not relocating the roadway, but uh if we were to change the capacity or the functionality of the roadway, the a standard bridge would be able to accommodate that.
Okay, and my last question, um does the, is St. Albert will be responsible for grading that road? Yeah, for the winter, I'm assuming. And do they have to do on both sides of the bridge and what are they doing at this point as it's shut down?
Through the chair to councillor Hughes, um maybe Jay Mason is on board what they're doing, but they do have to maintain the win- the road through the winter. Uh so the the graders are going over and with the win, the closure of the bridge, we couldn't have accommodated a greater to, greater on on the partially functioning bridge. So they definitely have to go and clear the snow for those residences that are kind of abutting towards the bridge on both sides. So that's the current plan and I don't know if Jay's online, if he wants to add anything to the maintenance plan.
Uh thanks, Donny. Yeah, actually, we're are are uh through the chair to councillor Bremanski, our team is working with Faisal's team on on uh alternate routes. We would have to figure out a way that we're going to achieve. So it's just diverting our our resources down and then having a turnaround point and having to come back. So it's additional work for us, but obviously I don't have a lot of choice when the bridge isn't sufficient to hold our capacity. So um we will be working on alternate plans uh once this is settled.
Okay, and I do have one more question. Are there residents living in the small area above the bridge in the diagram or are they all below?
We have residents on both sides of the bridge.
Thank you.
All right, uh councillor Killick.
Uh thank you. Um how the the one point two million to to build a pretty significant bridge. Uh because in the future plan, this extension, and I'll call it Hogan Road, uh is to have a traffic circle at the end of it up up by the red zone where it connects in or past that, I guess, in into the future fowler ways. So that's a pretty significant, going to be a pretty significant road uh in in our long term plan. Is uh one point two million sounds awfully cheap to me to build a bridge that would fit into that plan. It it I know you said it's plus or minus twenty percent, but um have we gone to Sturgeon County or and and said what, you know, they've replaced many bridges, like have we done any uh sanity check, I guess, to say?
Sanity check?
Yeah, I I don't know. To to check and see is is one point two, I I mean, one point two million, it's a lot of money, but the traffic circle is two point five million. To build a a future bridge for one point two million seems awfully cheap to me and I'm worried that when this comes back mid-year, uh we're going to find out with inflation, you know, every, we've been told yesterday, you know, inflation is fifty percent on construction projects. I I just, I I just wonder if leaving this closed is a better option than than uh thinking that we're going to build a bridge for one point two million and finding out it's, you know, double that or or triple that.
Through the chair to councillor Killick, um yes, that's why we left it in there as let's finish the design and then come back with actual construction dollars anticipated. This is kind of the design consultants projecting out based on analogous estimates that they have compared against other bridges they have done in the region, right? So one point two one million. I would ask uh Faisal to comment on the details of the design that went into um arriving at the one point two million. But um in terms of inflation, that's something that we have yet to see. Once we tender the the package and we'll find out the final results of the tendered value um before we come to council um for approval, final approval of the construction dollars, right? So um inflation wise, we are projecting on all our capital project charters is about five percent. Um but it could be added with contingency and whatnot that you know, we 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 have not yet seen in other tenders yet. But five percent is what we have accum- accumulated for other capital projects that we have put forward. What of Faisal, would you be able to add uh to the details of the one point two million?
Yeah, thank you, Donny. Um through the chair to council there, I think the way to look at this is to keep the service ability that we currently have in the area, it would it would keep, take that one point two million. The options that are available to a standard bridge allow us to build upon it for future capacities. So that's something that we could include in this um in this design is look at that functional study of ensuring what uh what level of bridge would be required in our seventy five year outlook as well. So I I guess at this point that these are standard bridges used throughout the throughout the area and throughout Alberta. So it's a very easy produced bridge. The girders are readily available. Uh it's a simple pile structure. Uh it's a very quick construction. And that's hence why the cost is a little bit lower. Not sure if that answers your question, but uh there we do not know the upgrade cost, I guess, is what you're referring about.
Okay, thank you. Um the and and just to to follow on to councillor Bennett Bremanski's question around, you know, residents or they're not trapped by by having this bridge closed. Um I I live in that area, see Hogan Road every day, almost uh the intersection there uh at Vilnav and uh any of the current construction that's going on along Vilnav right now on the west side of of that, they'll still have access and any future construction traffic going in and working at Jensen Lakes will not be impeded by this bridge closure. So it's it's kind of business as usual along that stretch of road.
I I can add the, and I, so this is uh, no, I should the right word, but it was some just witnessed on site during the closure is we were during harvest time and there was quite a few farm vehicles that mentioned that for clearance reasons, this was the only access that they could traverse uh their equipment to cross. So that would be a challenge that we would have in the springtime uh of how to address.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Hughes, go ahead.
Thank you. Just one more question. So how much is, I realize we're increasing the budget by a hundred and four thousand. What is the actual cost to do the design work? I just can't seem to find it.
Through the chair to councillor Hughes, yeah, that is the design dollars, hundred and four thousand. It may include some contingency built into it. Uh but Faisal, do you have any details to add to that?
Okay.
No, that is the the cost for the design.
So we used up everything else and we're just adding to the budget because we just need to get this and that's the, that's the full cost.
Yeah, there, the rest of the dollars are committed to products.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Awesome. Uh I see no more questions. So councillor Mackay, you willing to make the the motion that's recommended or what's your plan?
Yeah, no, I'm going to move the one that administration is put.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh that the budget for project number four two two four one three, the RMR bridge program be increased by a total of a hundred and four thousand dollars and that the increase in the budget be funded from capital reserve.
All right, I'll accept that motion. Go ahead.
Yeah, no more really opening comments. Great questions by my fellow councillors and many of uh the questions will be answered by the uh study. Uh this is something we inherited from uh uh Sturgeon County in our annexation and so with the good sometimes comes a little of the bad. So we are now into rural structures and we are into, just like we are into uh rural road clearing. So um and just I did reach out to a couple of Sturgeon councillors and I think they said that's approximately what they cost for their repair of a similar bridge is about one point two, one point four. And they have about fifteen of them. So that they have to look at replacing. So this is something that we've moved into with annexations.
Councillor Hughes.
Thank you. Um a couple of things. First of all, um Johnny, you're still there. Excellent. I like how we're doing this order of getting the design and then coming back and having a clear idea of the costs and what the ramifications are. So we don't go and have surprises halfway through the process where we've committed something and then find out that it's a lot more than we expected. So I think this is the process I'm more comfortable for any larger um projects going forward, uh just so that we all have a clear understanding before we get into it, uh what we're agreeing to. And the second thing is that I understand we have, we've added it because of annexation, but and I appreciate the fact that staff brought this forward now and said, hey, what do you want to do? We got a problem. Let's put it on the list. But I also think that as a council, we have to decide that um just the order of prioritization of what needs to be done and the impact of what's going to happen for any of the projects that comes forward and that the annexation lands do not supersede the current what was in the previous boundaries. Um and looking at, well, if can it be closed or not and what will be the delay effect? So that sort of thing. So I think that's going to be the discussion we're going to have next next year when this comes forward, when we have a clear idea of the costs, ramifications, uh where it goes in there. But I just want to make sure that when we're thinking about these things uh for a council decision, not for an administration recommendation, that we think about what what is the full balance of all the lands and not just what has now become on our, on an issue on our plate and whether or not it needs to be addressed right now or it needs to be put on the list to be addressed. So that's what I'm looking forward to having that much more of a clear um decisions being made next term. And I do think that having our next term, but next year, and I do think that having that full budget amount will allow us to make a much clearer indication. So I'm hoping that we still have the design work done for the other ones moving forward and that way, even if we don't do them next year and we do choose to delay it, that we're ready to go hit the ground running for twenty twenty four because it won't be lost work. And if we do decide to go forward with the other ones instead, that there's no delay in getting those achieved as well. So that's kind of, I'm hoping that we can get all of that done and also have an idea of what the real impacts are to closing this so that we can make a real definitive answer for what should be the top priority for the next construction season for those three areas. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh I'll just add, this was inherited from the annexation and I spent the summer um negotiating with the Royal Municipalities of Alberta on how we would divide the local government fiscal framework, the infrastructure dollars. And a lot of their position was they uh end up having to take care of small villages that aren't viable, uh dissolved and that their infrastructure is not up to par and it's costing them a lot of money. Well, this is an example of exactly the other way. Annexation um has caused um poor infrastructure planning to burden our residents. I'm very public in saying that what we do in St. Albert is good asset management. We are very well aware of what we need to to um invest in years in advance, especially for the RMR side. So uh it's interesting to see both sides of the of the coin and um it's unfortunate that this happened. Councillor McKay?
Nope, nothing more to say on close.
Uh call for the vote. Passes unanimously. The public hearing is scheduled for two, which is in twenty minutes. So there's no emergent items except for the one we just did. Uh information requests, notice of motions and announcements. Um I'm going to kick it off with a, I guess I just wouldn't mind a to a question of uh Mr. Fletcher about um we should have probably brought this up last time with the library. But we all received a letter on in October from the board about questions about whether um we had acted appropriately within the laws of the Library Act when administration proposed what they did for the library grant this year. Um and then I was asked about it, I should have asked last time, but I was asked about it um this morning during an interview with the Gazette and probably should have gave my legal opinion because I'm not a lawyer, but my opinion was that um it's not city staff that are making the the decision. It's it's us that approves a budget and so I don't think there's any contravention. But uh I probably should have a legal opinion before I speak about that. So Mr. Fletcher, I wouldn't mind your thoughts. I know your staff has been made aware of this, of this letter and this accusation that we are in contravention. So I, have you thought, given any thoughts to this?
Yep, thank you, your worship. Uh we absolutely have. So the the letter came to our attention yesterday. Uh so this was a letter from the board to council, not administration, but somehow made its way into the public realm um to uh to a media source. So in in fairly short order, we have had a legal review um of our actions and regrettably, what I would say is the board is uninformed uh or misinformed um as to the uh contents of their letter. Um the MVA is very specific. It states that the board has the opportunity to develop a budget, the library board uh through and present it to council. They absolutely did that. And while there's certainly discussions administration to administration to ensure that it's an informed um uh presentation, we do not dictate the terms of their ask to council. Um that would be manifestly illegal and we did not do that this year. And as was presented yesterday, um the opportunity was given to the board to make that presentation. I think where they're misinformed is perhaps a misunderstanding of what the proposed budget is. The proposed budget is a baseline. Uh we have a responsibility, I think, as administration to make the recommendations we feel are prudent. But ultimately, uh through your debate, uh you will determine what the final budget is. Uh and you can determine uh what the library funding is through that um in whole or in part based on their uh presentation and based on our recommendation. Um so the uh um the allegation that we contravened the act is manifestly false and I'm grateful the opportunity to publicly state so. And I will work with uh the library administration and craft a letter to the board to correct the record officially on that.
That would be good because I was also, um it's also been on Twitter, on on a blog site. So it is get, is getting some attention. I'm looking at section eight. Um the minister board shall before December first prepare budget. Um which they did and they presented to us uh to the budget estimate may shall be forthwith submitted to council. We've seen it actually more than once and then um and then we can approve all of it or in part of it. So I feel like we're fine. Uh just wanted to make sure I'm not speaking outside. Any, anything else on this?
And and if I may, your worship, um there will be a a legal review sent to each member of council to confirm the words that I've said. So you have.
Counsel Jolly is calling me. I don't think she can't answer the phone, Counsel Jolly. All right, uh, anyone else have any questions of administration, uh, any notices of motion or any announcements? Super quiet. Okay, um, I don't, do you have lots for in camera? We have fif- fif- it will is fifteen minutes enough?
It will have one item in fifteen minutes is plenty of time.
Okay, so why don't we make the motion to do eleven point one? Uh, and we'll have fifteen minutes to discuss it and then we'll come back up for the public hearing. So somebody. Counsel Killa, go ahead.
That council move in camera to have a confidential dialogue with the chief administrative officer pursuant to a uh, twenty-four, one, A of the Freedom of Information and Privacy Act.
Thank you, Counsel Killa. Call for the vote. Vote is closed. Passes unanimously. Okay, we'll quickly go in here. And I'll call.
We're back and it is, oh, two oh one, sorry guys. I will declare the public hearing, oh wait, what bylaw is this? Let's follow your.
Mayor.
Yes.
A motion to reconvene in public.
Oh, sorry, we have. Have, I was gonna say swear we did it. Council Broadhead volunteered, we do it publicly. So yes, motion reconvene in public by Council Broadhead will call for the vote. Council Killickson, okay, I'm assuming that's unanimous, okay, passes unanimously, all right. Now I will declare the public hearing on bylaws zero one two thousand and twenty two open. For second and third reading. Any member of council have a conflict of interest or any pecuniary interest to declare? Signal and lighten up. From what I understand, we really don't have a lot of public, just. Proponents of, is everything okay? Okay, changes, so we're gonna do the normal process, we have a presentation from our administration. And then if any, anyone in the gallery wants to speak about changing, and I guess you're not really proponents, you actually are the public today. We'll go to you second, sorry, administration, then council can ask questions of administration, then the public, same same group. Questions to the public, back to administration, I will allow questions until everyone is completely feels comfortable with casting their vote, this is a big one, it's the MDP. So who do we have presenting, we have Craig Walker. Scheduled to present, hi Craig.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of council.
And we need to get your microphone working. I don't see that you're muted, but I can't hear you.
Mic checked, can you hear me now, Madam Mayor?
That's perfect, perfect, go ahead.
Great, and just checking you can see my skirt in as well.
We can.
Perfect. So again, good afternoon, council for the recording, I'm Craig Walker with the planning branch. Joining me later to help answer any questions, I'll also have Vicky Dodge, the city's annexation project manager. We'll also have Darren Young from ISL Engineering, who led the city's growth management study. That was back in twenty twenty, and just to avoid any confusion, Madam Mayor, since ISL Engineering is a. Multi disciplinary consulting firm, later on you'll see some other staff who just so happened to work for ISL Engineering too, who are here today representing their own private clients. So because this amendment came before council previously at the May public hearing, and then again at committee of the whole just last month. The presentation today is just going to touch upon the high points. I'll begin with a refresher on how the MDP got to where it's at today. We'll then show the key maps side by side to remind council and the public about what's proposed to change. Followed by a recap on the proposed text amendments as well. And then lastly, we'll provide administrations commentary on the written submissions received from the public. So beginning with the MDP recap. So last April, the MDP was originally adopted. The MDP, of course, was originally intended to grow the city to a population of a hundred thousand people and thirteen thousand jobs. Fast forward a few months and the annexation formally came into effect. Thereby necessitated necessitating MDP amendments for those annexation lands. That was to grow the city beyond the hundred thousand people, that was the original impetus for flourish. And go beyond that to an estimated population of more like a hundred and seventy thousand people. So planning brought forward those amendments shortly after the annexation came into effect on January the thirty first. And then as per protocol, it went to the Edmonton Metropolitan Region Board for a decision, who indeed granted the approval in March. In May of this year, we then brought forward the bylaw for a public hearing, at which time administration was directed. To elaborate further on the planning rationale at a future committee of the whole meeting. In October, that committee, the whole meeting was held. At which time the materials were accepted as information and administration was directed to schedule a second public hearing where we find ourselves today. So I'll now provide a summary of the key amendments to the maps. Okay, so here we see a side by side illustration of the current map three on the left and the proposed map three on the right. At last month's committee presentation, administration outlined the detailed rationale for why we've painted the colors. That we have and why the conceptual roads are where they are. And to paraphrase it, all council, at that last meeting. I had tried to communicate that the proposed map three in the right. Was essentially prepared to align with the council endorsed growth management study that you see on the left. As well as with the Edmonton Metropolitan Region Board Growth Plan, and then it was tweaked based upon newer information. Likewise, here we see a side by side illustration of the current map four in the MDP on the left and the proposed map four on the right. At last month's committee meeting, we aim to to demonstrate that others than, other than some color changes. The new map is ultimately the same and in its intent and demonstrates the anticipated phasing of future development. And what it really implies is that the bulk majority of the former city boundaries. Should accommodate most of the city's population growth to a hundred thousand people over the next few decades. Before expanding into the annexation area, particularly into the pink area up here in the northwest. So those are super quick recap of the maps, next I'll provide a quick recap on the proposed tax amendments. So don't worry, like the committee presentation, I will read this. Once again, this informational text provides general context for the annexation. This type of commentary is found all throughout the MDP and is not a policy. Speaking of policies, there are three new policies that are proposed. To paraphrase them, this first one pertains to pursuing. An even more ambitious non residential target within the annexation area. And that's to offset the lower proportion of non residential uses elsewhere in the city. This next policy refers to map four about phasing, as we just discussed a few slides back. And then lastly, this policy just acknowledges that agriculture will remain for quite a while in some areas. In addition, still on text, there are two new definitions that are proposed for the glossary. One for alternate jurisdiction. And the other to define the north annexation area. And Madam Mayor, while I'm here, I just want to point out a proposed friendly amendment, administration are proposing. To this version of the bylaw that received first reading already, and ultimately. The version that received first reading had incorrectly referenced this figure three, just an oversight. It should have annexed, or it should have referenced it rather, schedule two of the order in council, and what that is. Is this map here, which is directly within the municipal government board order, that just defines what the annexation lands actually are. Moving on, we spent quite a bit of time at the committee meeting talking about this one. This next text amendment to change the terminology from tax revenue split to assessment split. Was requested by the Chamber of Commerce due to fears around a potential perception. That the business community might be the target of disproportionate mill rate increases. In order to achieve council's goals, and of course, this was never the city's intention. And after a lot of discussion back in October at Committee of the Whole. What we had tried to communicate to council is that what our conclusion is. Is that council's goal, that the MDP is goal, it's ultimately to reduce the reliance on residential taxes by increasing the supply in general. Of non residential development, and we pointed out that to increase that supply, there there's sort of a three hold. Bunch of things you need to do, you you first need zoned land and then, and then when it's developed, you get the assessment. And then accordingly, then you get the tax revenue and. Therefore, our recommendations is that since there is no silver bullet. Our recommendation is to continue to use the term assessment split within the MDP as requested by the chamber. But regardless. Because no one term is perfect, administration is committed to reporting annually on all three of those terms. So the council has the bigger picture of what's actually occurring. Will now provide some commentary in relation to the written submissions from area landowners. These submissions were all provided at the time of the public hearings, not during the earlier stages of public engagement back in late twenty twenty one. So first of all, this property here. Represented by B and A Planning Group, also known as the Miz Property. So landowner in the northeast part of the city has concerns with the MDP's conceptual depiction of the coal mine road extension. Which they submit could potentially be interpreted as fragmenting a corner of their lands. Therefore, the landowner would like the city to adjust the MDP maps just very slightly, kind of as shown. In order to demonstrate tying into the existing alignment of Range Road two fifty three instead. In administration's view, no changes are necessary to enable such a road alignment. MDP maps take a thirty thousand foot view of planning and transportation matters, and as stated directly on each of the MDP maps. Are approximate and for general illustrative purposes only. On the contrary, the map submitted by B and A Planning Group has superimposed local street level details. And parcel specific boundaries on top of a highly conceptual MDP map. Which in our view is neither appropriate nor accurate for policy direction contained within the MDP. In order to enable maximum flexibility for and public engagement with all of the other area landowners. That these kinds of very detailed road alignment matters are typically addressed at the future area structure plan stage. And at that time, regardless of the exact road alignment, whether it's a bit to the left or a bit to the right. Regardless of whatever alignment is deemed advantageous, administration does not, whoops, I'm jumping ahead here. Let me just go back here, back to my notes, apologies, council. So at at that time, at that area structure plan, even subdivision stage, that's when these details would really be ironed out. And regardless of whether the road alignment is the gray line or the blue line, or or indeed something even a little bit different. Administration does not foresee the need for an MDP amendment, that this is just a conceptual depiction that. Demonstrates an intention to have a a node roughly here, roughly here, and are. And a connecting road somewhere there to connect the two, the specific alignment would be determined in the future. So those are administrations comments on that first. Comment from B and A. Next, the landowner in the west part of the city has concerns with the purple employment lands designation assigned to them by the MDP. They forecast that there will be insufficient market demand for non residential uses. And therefore would like to change this purple to the sort of beige colored map on the opposite side of Carrot Creek. Which which indicates a neighborhood as opposed to employment. In support of that rationale, council would have seen a a large package which ultimately compared historical non residential assessments in other municipalities. Ultimately attempting to demonstrate that the city of St Albert's assessment goals. And our corresponding land use designations were maybe a bit too ambitious. Additionally, the owner submits that the employment lands may pose a land use conflict. For the neighborhood land use designation on the other side of Carrot Creek, this is within the Sherrill. Area structure plan, just for context. In administration's view, changing the color here from purple to beige. Would deviate from the vision identified within the MDP and could impact the city. And could impact the city's ability to increase employment. As demonstrated in this next diagram. The purple employment lens designation is consistent with the growth management study. And in our view, aligns with council's endeavors to pursue an increased supply of non residential lands. In addition, administration would respectively submit that the historical assessment statistics submitted by the consultant are limited. Insofar as many of them are a function of outdated policy frameworks, which for example predate the Edmonton Metropolitan Region Board Growth Plan. They predate the the full completion of Anthony Henday Drive, which if you if you recall. Though St Albert's segment was open, it wasn't fully completed on the northeast until two thousand sixteen. Furthermore, these statistics don't reflect the significant land use and supply and demand shift. That both St Albert and the region have been experiencing in the non residential sector over the past few years. As for the potential for land use conflicts, administration notes that Carrot Creek, which bisects these two areas. Will provide an ample natural buffer in our view. And Madam Mayor, be that as it may, and and you'll recall this from the committee, the committee of the whole meeting, if I bring up this next diagram. Since this property is fully located within this pink area of map four, that's our future urban growth area. Regardless of what color the map is in map three. These lands will be unviable to develop for many years due to infrastructure servicing needs. By which time a new municipal development plan should be created anyway, and all land use assumptions, statistics. And forecasts can be revisited based upon the latest available information. In the meantime. The request is premature in our view, particularly given that the EMRB have already approved. The employment lands designation that you see here in the proposed map three. Moving on, and being represented by the same consulting team, another owner. This time within the former city boundary has made inquiries in relation to their employment lands designation too. And what that may or may not entail for their vision. Although no formal application has been received, the inquiries contemplate allowing predominantly retail or commercial uses on the west side of Ray Gibbon Drive. At this time, it's unclear if or when or or where an MDP amendment. Might be necessary or might not be necessary. Since the employment lens designation does contemplate industrial and supportive commercial uses already. Regardless, it's administration's opinion that such inquiries within the existing city boundary. Are separate from the current city led amendment at hand, which is primarily to deal with the annexation area. Therefore, the proponents have been informed that they would have the opportunity to apply for each MDP amendment separately. If they're actually warranted, which would be reviewed by the city, potentially the EMRB based upon their merits. And the interim administration does remain committed to working with the proponents on their emerging concept. And then lastly, council, you'll see within your agenda package, just last week, we received an email in opposition to the proposed road connection. Between Campbell Road, running from the Henday. To to here, this is just outside service place for context, this little connection to Poundmaker Road. In response, administration would just point out that this road link is already contemplated within the approved transportation master plan. With that, Madam Mayor, recommendations today are that upon closure of the public hearing, that bylaw one dash twenty twenty two. Be read both a second and third time. I'll now turn it back to you, Madam Mayor, and again, happy to answer questions along with a small team of other city staff. As well as Darren Young from ISL Engineering, thank you.
Thank you, all right, now we've got Vicky here as well, okay. I I will open it up to questions of administration. Counsel Killick.
Thank you, so in in the. We we say the MDP is thirty thousand foot view. Particularly the road up in in road alignment, proposed road alignment up in the northeast. The landowner there asking for a a small change. Our 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 rationale for not doing that is that it's a thirty thousand foot level. Plan and. But i- in that it's a thirty thousand foot plan, wouldn't it be just easy to make that change and? Is there some other piece of the process then that that I'm missing that we would, by making that small change?
Which of the three requests, which one are you talking? From the Mizlands?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, up up in the northeast, it it, would we, yeah, that one, sixteen. So. Again, our our argument against making that change is that it's, we could change it later. When we get down to the neighborhood planning level. But what, so why wouldn't we just change it now? Because it could change to the left. Later, like, what's preventing us from doing that, would we have, would that small change drive a requirement to go back to the EMRB and get the whole plan? Reapproved.
Thank you for the question through the chair to Counselor Killick. Ultimately, nothing is stopping us from making that change in in our. View, the the public hearing is the appropriate time for these kinds of concerns to come forward. This is still the public hearing, council could indeed give direction to administration to to make this change prior to consideration of second or third reading. In our view though, again, whether the. Alignment is the the original gray line or the blue line or anything in between or or to the left or the right. It it all just shows a general intention. To have a road connection somewhere in that general neck of the woods. The appropriate time to make that change would be if council directs us to make that change. At this point, we are essentially just bringing it forward to. Part two of the public hearing, if you like, but to this point, we have not received direction from council to proceed and make it happen. Though that certainly would be an option.
And can I just add a little bit to that as well? One of the other reasons why we wouldn't have made that recommendation is is to Craig's point is. There's, we don't see a a reason to, and and we don't want. Little changes like this to necessarily come back in front of council all the time, so it's a little bit about process and efficiencies as well. Here at the city, however, if council wants to direct a change. Of this my, of this status, like we said, we don't feel that that changes anything. Just because there's a line there doesn't mean that that's exactly where the road will be into the future either.
Part of part of Counsel Killick's questions was also would that trigger another review of EMRB, I'm thinking, minor, probably not, okay, all right. You but you're recommending, or but you had concerns with. The map that was submitted because it had too many details, but we could just change the dotted line. I don't even know how you would draft that into a motion though.
This, this is where we would, this is why we haven't done it, we would just. You can direct us to come back with an alternate map at a different time. Would be one of the options that you could come back with.
So we could approve the MDP as is today and and do a separate. Next time the MDP comes back, like, there's no rush.
But but again, like, I guess this is where administration is saying, you you can, but there's really no need to either.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, if I could, it's just, it's an indicative line, like, it it just means there will be something there at some point in time, it has no bearing to the actual lay of the load. Road on the ground.
Okay, thank, thank you.
You have any question you have for now? There's lots more chance. Okay, that comes to Broadhead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Counsel Killick, I got a follow on your line of thinking, so. If it doesn't matter to us, why does it matter to the proponent? I I mean, they're here and they're spending money to get this map changed, what? What's the deal?
You'll have to ask the proponent that question, they're not spending money on the application themselves, though they're trying to get this. Change through this process.
The normal process, yeah, what would the normal process to change an MDP if it was proponent driven?
There is an application fee, I don't. Um, there is an application fee, um I don't have that off the top of my head, maybe Adrian has that, um. But there would be an application fee, um there'd be criteria for making the change. I guess we would just go back to the proponent and say, well, we don't really feel that there's a need to actually make the amendment. So unless they were coming in perhaps with an area structure plan um that had a significant change to the location of that connection. Um then we might look at making an amendment at that time, but at this time, administration feels that there's really no need. To make that amendment.
Okay, fair enough, thank you. Um. Mister Walker, could you go back to that last map around the uh? Uh the alignment of Campbell Road or something to Poundmaker, I I'm not. Not sure I exactly caught what you were saying there.
Thank you, Counselor Bradhead, I'll just pull it up here. Um, does that, is my screen showing up now?
Yep.
Yes. So in the. In the current MDP um approved last uh April. This little dotted line uh which illustrates um according to the legend, a potential future road that was not there. In the new map. As you see here, that dotted line is here. In order to. Just reflect the already approved transportation master plan, which uh is this. Here, so here you can see things like uh the potential future alignment of one twenty-seventh street. Um, as well as this, um some widening for Poundmaker Road. And some and and this potential connection as well, the MDP map is just. Reflecting that in this latest and greatest version. Uh the proponent that or or rather the 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 resident that submitted that email backs on to Poundmaker somewhere in this vicinity. And just has concerns that should that link go through, they would envision a lot of short cutting perhaps from these uh Sturgeon County. Um and and other neighborhoods, short cutting along Poundmaker down Campbell to get on to the Henday. That is, that is their uh. Concern, and my comment was just that the the transportation master plan. Um has already envisioned these types of potential future improvements. Uh at some point, the the details of them are. Still well into the future, you know, is this going to be two lanes, is it going to be four lanes, uh that that's a future exercise to be determined. Um in terms of timing, in terms of detailed design, it's just kind of a placeholder to show that at some point we would envision this to be. Upgraded from a rural cross section to an urban cross section, um. And the landowner has expressed some reservations about the impacts that traffic might have on their enjoyment of their property.
If you drive past Service Place towards this, it was a row of trees, I feel like people are already driving what will be that future, if they're off off-road vehicles, yeah.
Yeah, no, thank you, uh Mister Walk, that's that's great, I I just wanted to confirm that my thinking was exactly what you were saying, so, thank you.
Yes, I got Council project.
Yep.
Council McCaw, you're up.
Thank you. Um. When was our previous MDP, two thousand seven? Yeah, I know, but previous one to this one. When was it? Two thousand.
Was it in one?
Two thousand and seven, right?
Two thousand and seven was the 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 bigger amendment, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, so I mean, we're talking.
Oh, when we did the annexation, yeah.
Yeah, but we're not really talking a great deal of time. Between. Our last ticket to cat in relation to it, and then going even back two thousand seven, I think nineteen ninety-seven, I believe, if my. Uh failing old memory uh is still there, but I guess my next question would go, right now, we have an unfunded. Um project around Neil Ross Road Extension. Now, it's not coming, not going forward, so we don't anticipate bringing Neil Ross Road into construction until. Twenty twenty-nine, unless there's another motion in front of us somewhere in that area.
Unless we get funding.
Unless we do, unless we get funding, yeah, but I'm right now, for all intents and purposes, we're not going to do anything on Neil Ross Road other than what we did in twenty twenty. Is that administration's understanding?
I'm seeing some nods, but I'll just.
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, so I mean. I mean, right now, we're not moving forward on Neil Ross Road. I mean, there's nothing to bring us unless we get additional funding or some some something else happens, but I mean. So, I I mean. That's kind of my questions, I'm just trying to say, we're we're so far out and I'm thinking on this that. I mean, we've had one twenty-seventh street on the books for how long?
Yeah.
So. Anyways.
You're good, okay.
Yeah.
Counselor Killik.
Um, it's similar. Kind of follow-on question, so in one case, we make a small little teeny weeny adjustment to the map. To show the connection of uh on onto Poundmaker Road. But we won't make a bigger. Change. For a road alignment, it it feels like we're. We're doing one thing, but we won't do the the other for for a developer or or a landowner, sorry. So I I'm really struggling that we would make that little minor change, but a larger request from the landowner, we. We wouldn't make, e- even though we're saying the same argument on the.
Can I, can I, can I defend our staff for two secs here, there's a big difference between a a dotted line being here or here or no dotted line at all. That's the difference, right? So they're suggesting that we just let the public know that the connection will be there, it might not be exactly there, could go north or southeast or west, but. There's a difference between where the road is or whether there is or is not a road, if I can defend my staff a bit there. And the transportation master plan, yeah.
Can I also just make a comment, Craig, this is a response to a comment that. There's no, there's been no change to the document as. Proposed by administration. That wasn't already there before. So this, this is just a response, could you please clarify?
Correct, Miss Peter, so the the version of this bylaw that received first reading um back in January of this year. Showed the the alignment of Coal Mine where it is, um as well as the extension of Campbell Road. Where it is, so the 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 letter from B and A Planning Group would like that road adjusted a little bit. Because in their view, they perceive that it illustrates a potential fragmentation of their property, which um uh. Isn't in alignment with that landowner's uh uh future development ambitions. Even though that is not administration's intention, it it's not our intention to fragment a property, it's just to show a. Uh a potential future road alignment between those two mixed-use nodes. With the Poundmaker Extension. That is really just um if you like, more of a housekeeping change to reflect what the transportation master plan shows. The landowner in that circumstance commented um expressing reservations about the. Potential road impacts, traffic impacts, noise impacts, et cetera, that that may have since the Poundmaker is uh. Um a buts their reader property, but administration has not changed either.
And Counselor Killik, you could do it today. Uh or you could make a motion at the end saying the next time the MDP comes back to us. Bring back that dotted line to reflect more what B and A's is requesting, you could be, it's less than us hold it up because of that. But we can absolutely achieve, I I get what you're saying, and Counselor Bradhead sounds like he feels the same way, yeah.
A similar question then on on the uh. Uh west side of uh Ray Gibbon, it it question in in terms of having that as employment land versus industrial. Or mixed use, I guess, would be our our other uh designation, is there any difference in tax? Between those two categories that we would get, so it. It, like, we could, again, make that change as requested by the landowner. My my question is, would it affect? The tax uh sixty forty that we're trying to accomplish there?
I would say that it affects the servicing in the future that the city has to do, so the most expensive type of servicing is residential. Then commercial, and then the cheapest service is industrial, so the tax assessment is is the same, we don't levy. Um industrial and commercial differently. But it will cost us more to maintain a commercial area than it does to an industrial area.
But if we were to have have the developer bring forward a, I don't know, an Ikea.
Oh, yeah.
Would would that fit within the current? Purple designation on the map?
I think the biggest question is how fast is it going to get absorbed, right, depending on how it's zoned. And the argument from some is commercials faster and our staff is saying industrial.
Okay.
Consider as farmland, you can almost nothing.
Yeah, it's all, it's all a benefit, but.
Sorry, I'm speaking out of turn, if there's anyone from administration that wants to add.
Yeah, I was just trying to figure out what, why we would be reluctant to make that requested. Change if it doesn't, again, doesn't drive us back to EMRB, it doesn't drive us back, doesn't make any difference to our. Tax, which is really what we're trying to do, we're trying to get. You know, more tax from business, lot of less from.
That one might drive us back to EMRB. That's a big chunk of land, taking away employment out of, and that's. You know. That might take us back, I I'll get an opinion from staff, I'm seeing Mister Fletcher saying, yes, we would have to.
Yeah, I I I will defer to uh to engineering certainly and planning, but uh yes, that's a significant change.
Yeah.
Okay, uh. That my my last question is really around the comment that was just made around uh. Kerat Creek fifty-meter setback, well, I think quote, they said on slide sixteen, it said, we'll provide a natural buffer. Um, when we had our overview, I think it was on October eleventh. I I specifically asked the question, is Kerat Creek protected on both sides? By the fifty-meter setback, and at that time, I I was, the answer was yes. Subsequently, we've had um emails from a resident and also I looked it up as well. That uh we have that. Protection of Kerat Creek five dot one dot thirteen in the MDP. But then it has section B that says that that can can be changed. And has been changed by the Shro Land, so I I'd just like to ask a question of. Has, have we actually made a change for Shro to not protect Kerat Creek by fifty meters or?
I I can try answer that question, um I I don't have all the answers of Shro because that was approved prior to our. Um prior to my time here at the city, um and it was also adopted prior to Flourish. So you you already have an area structure plan, which is a statutory council-approved plan in place regarding um setbacks. But the way the MDP is currently written is that there is a fifty-meter buffer from generally the top of bank. Um. Unless it is proved that the land is actually developable. I'm I'm paraphrasing, um but to prove that it's developable, there are some significant um. Documents that we would need as the city to determine that. Um, the fifty-meter setback is to ensure that we are able to collect the maximum amount of environmental reserve. As defined within the Municipal Government Act. Uh municipal reserve is very specific on what you can and cannot deem as developable land. Um so that's what the fifty-meter buffer is trying to do. Um, there are other provisions that we can put in place, such as municipal reserve to extend. A buffer or land purchase, but what what we did not want to do through the MDP was. Require council to purchase land up to the fifty meters if it was developable, so this is, this is a way of us saying. All right, there's a fifty-meter setback, if you as a landowner want to prove that your land is developable within that fifty meters, you need to do so, and you need to do so with these. Very specific and highly detailed engineering um reports. Um. If not, you can just apply the fifty-meter setback, we'll take it as environmental reserve. That's essentially what we're saying within it, and it would be, to your point, on both sides, once you approve. Or if you approve this amendment, we would then have that protection on both sides of Kerat Creek. Right now, we don't have it on both sides of Kerat Creek because we actually have no policy direction. Um for the lands on the other side of Kerat Creek, and that's part of uh what we're asking you to do today.
Yeah.
That, yeah, it helps, uh A- Adrian, would you have the history as, have we allowed? The Shro Land to encroach on the fifty-meter on Kerat Creek?
Uh again, I I didn't work on that area structure plan, I I believe that. We haven't gotten to that stage, really, there was. The fifty-meter setback that was identified um between floodplain and non-flood, non-floodplain, um. Uh we'd have to take a look at that one a little bit closer, I see Christine is looking at her. Looking for her ASP um feverishly there, but.
I, yeah, I I I know that there are policies within it, I do think that there are, I think it's a very similar policy because it was a policy that was in the old municipal development plan. But I know that there's more municipal reserve that goes alongside that, so at the area structure plan stage, it may have already been determined that some of those lands were not. Were developable, and so then the setback was less, and I, but I don't know if it's a full fifty fifty meters, I know there is a protection along Kerat Creek. But to what extent it is, I don't have that off the top of my head.
Okay, um. With with this, the uh clause B that allows. There there's no parameters that says how far, how close it can get to Kerat Creek, like, could potentially get. I don't know, within ten meters or do we say the fifty-meter can only be cut in half to twenty-five, is there in any? The policy doesn't.
There is provincial, there is provincial regulation on this, up to six meters. Uh that 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 you can protect, um the. Uh six meters, I at six meters is is as as close as you can get.
So it can't get any closer than six meters to top of bank?
Um, to the. The bed and shore, I think is how it's written.
Okay.
Yeah. So this is why we have an expanded policy that talks specifically about um repair in areas, top of bank, slope stability. Um, and floodplain.
Okay, I'm I'm just very concerned that the way we have a a policy with an opt-out clause B. That says we can get closer than than the fifty meters um isn't really a. A a strong enough protection. And. I I think once we lose our protection of our small. Pieces of green, I don't know, River Valley, Creek Valley, uh they're they're lost forever, and. It it concerns me that we have this. You know, which is not clearly specified, we we say fifty meters, but then we're determined by, there's no clarity that says. You know, but it but it has to be within six meters or ten meters, redefine it in in. In the first clause, but we don't define it in the second clause. How how would we bring clarity to that? Or that require a motion and and change to the? MDP?
Yeah, I think we would look for direction from council regarding that, um. So that we could evaluate to determine how to best respond. Um again, remember that the municipal development plan is your higher order level of plan. Um at the area structure plan, we will look further into, again, identifying what is developable and non-developable um within. There are other options as well, um looking at other policies that the. Um city may have about wanting to do land purchases along. Um, these areas. We're responding in a very planning and development perspective. At this time, um we're really talking about what is developable land as identified within the Municipal Government Act. Um if it's determined as developable, we would have to purchase it at developable land rates. The land to protect it any further, unless we took it as part of our ten percent municipal reserve. But if we've already exceeded the ten percent municipal reserve, you have to take it, you have to purchase it, so. Again, these are the high order plan. So again, these are the high order plans and the high order direction. And if there's further direction that you want to provide through other documents. I think there's an opportunity there, but there will be. I guess we didn't want to tie council's hand on some of. These items which could be quite costly. But we do understand the intent and I see Adrian's got his hand up.
Okay, may maybe I'll issue an IR to get kind of more detail as to how we can do that. And and quite honestly, if 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 I felt that. Council's hands were tied in protecting green space along Carrot Creek, I I would be. I would be happy to have my hands tied to that, quite honestly. I. I think we have to do everything we can. I mean, we've we've just said Carrot Creek is a major drainage area with Morenville and. Fifty hundred year floodplain, all of those good things, and yet we seem to be having this way. Out that allows developers to encroach on that that land. So. I'll I'll issue a separate IR and we'll take it off the table with more detail at that time to see how we can. Further further refine protection of 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 a rare resource Carrot Creek.
And I don't forget, this MDP amendment is really to. Put some colors on the map for the annex lands. Your your question is would refer to lands that are. Already in our boundaries and it's a bigger conversation. So I think an IR is a good way to go.
Excuse me, Mayor?
The other side of Carrot Creek is actually annex land, isn't it?
The other side is on the west side. Yeah, we wanted, that's what I'd say, do both sides, yeah.
Yeah.
Mayor, if if I may. I can, I can just read chapter and verse from the Shuro ASP, and I think that will address a lot of these concerns. So from the Shuro ASP, the land use bylaw will define the designated floodline for Carrot Creek. There will be a portion of land that is within the fifty meter setback from the top of bank. That is below the designated floodline that will be environmental reserve. The portion of land above the designated floodline that is within the fifty meter setback from the top of bank will be municipal reserve. A minimum fifty meter setback from the top of bank of Carrot Creek is required. To protect the riparian area and provide space. For potential trail development. So that is in the area structure plan that is approved by council right now.
There is environmental reserve and maybe a trail for people to enjoy the creek.
There is environmental reserve and municipal reserve already specified within the area structure plan that is approved by council right now on the books.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Adrian. Counselor Mackay beside me here pulled it up somehow mysteriously that quickly. Literally has the better filing system than I do. And so I, so I appreciate that. And again, my my intention purely is to make sure. Once in a lifetime chance to protect Carrot Creek for the future generations of St. Albert residents. And it it sounds like that's that's been accomplished.
Is that all the questions yet? Okay. Counselor Hughes, you're up next.
Okay, we're not gonna take, we're gonna be here for a good time, a long time with me. So. The concerns, you know how you're saying, okay, if they have a concern, they can just do it, file an MDP. So let's just say that we left the the road, the. Wait is the bislands, and then an ASP came in and it wasn't exactly matching. Would they have to file an MDP amendment then? Or would it be like, ah, we're still close enough? We'll take the ASP without doing an MDP change. Would, how would that be interpreted if the road didn't match? Our high level exactly as it is?
Through the Chair to Counselor Hughes, as I attempted to communicate, there would not be an MDP amendment. The 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 MDP, again. Taking that thirty thousand foot view.
Yeah.
Provides guidance to an ASP, which maybe provides a ten thousand foot view. So as long as there is a road somewhere in that neck of the woods that connects roughly those two locations. That aligns with the general intent of this. Long range visionary document, an MDP amendment would not be required.
Okay, because it's just, I think that from a, I'm not a developer, but if I played one on TV. It's a time and money issue, right? So it's both like the delay and then also the fact that they have to file extra papers just to have it happen. So if that's not going to be a concern, that's reassuring. The other question I had was about the. The North of Villeneuve Road, because we're just having two fifty five and the bridge that was just discussed a couple hours ago, or I don't know, a few days ago when we started this meeting. And so we have that on the map that we have like a little stars next to it and stuff. So. Is the intention to have it be single lane or is intention be larger? And what is the timeline for a build out there? Do we have any ideas? Although it's not our our decision about when things get built exactly, are we looking at like? A realistic idea of like ten fifteen five two, and then when it has those little stars, like what are we looking at here? Do we actually need more than two lanes?
Thank you, Counselor Hughes, through the chair. Again, I I would, I would bring us back a level. And and just remind council that this is a long range visionary doc that that's intended to be.
This is not specifically about that. This is to help us make a decision for the two fifty five that came before you. So I'm just kind of like piggybacking because you're here. Okay?
So yeah, Whither Villeneuve was, again, two lanes, four lanes. The timing, a- all of that is is yet to be determined. The the MDP just kind of paints a picture based upon what we know today. To to set a placeholder when more information, when better newer information is available in the future. This document can be amended or or it may not need to be amended. Right now, it's a broad line, a broad dotted line on the map that shows roughly the intention of where that road should go. The details would be ironed out. When needed at the future, whether it was driven by funding or an area structure plan or a subdivision or or something else. This just.
Yeah.
Paints that thirty thousand foot view.
Okay, so just, I'm just gonna follow up real quick, hopefully. Is that, I know we said that one area was gonna be like thirty years away or more, like the pink area to my left. And so that area, do we have an idea like it's like at least five years or ten years? Or is it really like it could be sort of the later?
I guess I'll I'll try to respond back to that question. What we're suggesting is that. The the pink areas kind of on the other side of Carrot Creek, that bigger area is. In exceedance of where we actually feel Flourish is going. So we would almost recommend at that point another municipal development plan. So I don't want to put a timeline, but I would suggest it's a longer time period than five years for sure. Flourish's scope is really to look at growing St. Albert to a hundred thousand people. And to incorporate another thirteen thousand jobs. So after we hit a hundred thousand people, that's when we would start looking at perhaps. Significant updates or a a full new air municipal development plan. So because of that, we don't. Kind of anything in the pink area, we don't see that happening. In an urban style. Within the confines of Flourish.
Okay, that's cool. The last question I have is, because I know that we've enjoyed doing this update so far this year tremendously, all of us, including yourselves. Is. When are we planning to do the next update? Because there's something saying like when we update this next time, we'll do this. Do we have an idea of? Are we going to be initiating the next update or would it be developer initiated to do any further updates?
So large scale updates will be done by administration. We would. Expect that there may be one or two amendments that developers might bring forward for council's consideration. And then administration would evaluate those amendments based upon the current policy, which is council's. Direction.
So I. This again, twelve months' time, are we looking at a bit longer?
So after five years, we have a chance to really look at it to see how. How we're doing with the municipal development plan and how how much is it is in alignment with the growth plan, the regional growth plan. But I don't anticipate a significant shift for probably ten years.
So really, but in five years' time, there'll be something looked at, right? Like, we'll, we'll probably put it on. Develop the next five years, there is still the opportunity to have that changed over at that time, worst case scenario.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. That's it.
Counselor Brumansky? Thank you. Through the mayor to administration, questions regarding the MDP plan. Do the proponents have opportunity to file an application prior to the plan being approved, or does it have to be approved?
It makes it a lot easier if they. Apply after it's approved because then it's an amendment where we've provided. Direction, where council has provided direction so that they can actually make an amendment to it. Otherwise, they have. Otherwise, there's really no policy direction for them to amend to.
Okay, and but they're giving us input right now. So my 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 question, I guess, is why wouldn't we want to try and make it as accurate as possible? At this point, being that we, you know, it's five years out that we'll look at it again, or we're going to have developers coming to us for changes.
So I think that's part of the reason why Mr. Walker provided the feedback. We evaluate changes based upon the policy that's already in place. So. In the past, we've we've gone to the. We've gone in for our annexation. We had that approved. We've got direction from council at that time. We're continuing on. With what we think is the direction that council has provided us in the past. A lot of the policies already contained within Flourish provided us the. The direction and impetus of how we've incorporated them in this proposed amendment to the MDP. So that's what we're doing. And so. Some of these are changes. That we have thought, not all of them, but some of the proposals are changes that we feel may go against. Some of the direction we've received from council in the past. And so we're not here today. We're bringing forward an amendment to. To to incorporate the annexation lands into the MDP and not to look at specific. Applications driven by land developers.
Okay, and if you were to just implement these, you know, three, four changes that are asked, what would the cost in the city be? Do you have to first research the MDP plan again, or what what avenues would you go to?
I think if there's going to be a change by council, you would do so right now. If if you want to incorporate the changes as proposed by the proponents. That would be a consideration of council and then there would be no. Costs incurred to administration, but there would be policy direction change and we would have to. Look at some of the updates to all of our long range plans to ensure that they're still in conformance.
If I may just add on to that, there'll be no cost from a dollar figure, but there certainly would be costs in terms of capacity and prioritization. Depending on the scope of the change, then we could also perhaps trip the wire to go back to the MRB for approval.
Okay, and then the other comment I had is, you know, like if I was a property owner and the road was, you know, infringing on my property, so to speak. And we're saying at this point in time, it's not our intention, but I mean. Who who knows who will be here at that particular time, right? Whether council's here or anybody that doesn't have that intention. I think that. That it's important to be accurate in having on a proposed plan. Something that gives developers or individuals some sort of insurance that they don't have to worry that, you know. Five, ten years down the road, it will infringe on their property. So. I would just like to see some sort of easier way of maybe getting it a little more accurate than what we have now.
It's just a simple amendment.
Just amendment, okay. Okay, that's all my questions then. Thank you.
We we do have some registered speakers. Let me pull up my list. Let me just check to who wants to speak and who does it, because you might want to ask some of these questions to people in the gallery. So we have. Heather Chisholm, which is the senior planner from B and A, which I think we all received a email from. Just here to answer questions. So if anyone has any questions for Heather, she's online. We also, according to my list, we have, we have David Derby, which we all know well, Coda, just answer questions, David. Okay. So David would be speaking to the piece of land in Lakeview. Darren Young, who who's been with us, we have Sean Novak. Who wants, I believe Sean wants to speak, is that correct? Okay, so Sean, you're gonna go up first and you're, I'll get you to go to the mic, and then I also have. Agents Constance. Gooley, ISL Engineering and Land Services. Okay, and they are speaking. Again, I think it's, is it with Coda as well? Okay, awesome. And you you want to speak? You're not just here to answer questions? Okay, so I, all right, perfect. So Sean, why don't we get you up to the mic if you're ready? And you're speaking to the piece of land, west side of Carrot Creek in the newly annexed lands, right? Okay. So just to, so you're you're Sean.
Yeah.
Okay, so why don't you put, say your name for the record?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Pierce Schuch. I'm a principal of Nichols Supply Management, and Sean and I are jointly responsible for.
Okay.
Uh, this mission.
Okay. So you, Pierce, are you here speaking on two different proposed changes?
Yes.
Okay, just keeping it all together. All right. Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you.
Yeah, Customer Mackay has just reminded me to remind anyone from the public that we, you know, we've heard some of the the conversations. Maybe not from west of Carrot Creek before, but for sure from the Mizlands and from. Coda, so we're looking for new information. So if we can keep kind of your comments towards that, but you have your five minutes. Go ahead whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. As I believe, we've been discussing this afternoon, the city's MDP amendment currently contemplates. The Crans Lands for Designation as Future Employment, contrary to Mr. Crans' desire to see his lands designated as a neighborhood. Municipal management and ISL were engaged to conduct a market study to explore. The market for non-residential lands in the city and determine if a change from the employment area land use designation on the Crans Lands to neighborhood. Is consistent with future market conditions and related city documents. Notably, we observe or we reviewed the MDP. A market study commissioned by the city and prepared by FBM. As well as a growth management study submitted as appendix D as part of the city's annexation application. What we see on this slide in front of us now really sums up. Our issue, and this was included in our report that is part of the agenda package. Historically, the city has absorbed roughly six to seven gross hectares of non-residential land per year. That's going back to the seventies. Slightly higher in recent, recent times. And that that land is split relatively evenly between commercial and industrial uses. The city's own FBM forecast as well as the Nichols report. Which are rigorous pieces of analysis. They're not simply an extrapolation of historical. Rates estimate slightly lower levels of absorption between three and five hectares annually, again. Half residential and half commercial. The proposed land use designation that affects the Crans Lands. Is informed predominantly by the growth management study submitted as part of the city's annexation application. The study estimates absorption. Non-residential lands that will average approximately nineteen hectares per year. Three point seven of which are commercial and fifteen point three of which are industrial. And you can see that the the large bar on the right of the graphic. But this forecast is. Underpinned by a policy objective of achieving achieving a sixty forty Rodney split as articulated in the growth study. It's not tied to any market analysis. In other words. As compared to the market demand, we believe there's an excess allocation towards industrial lands. To provide that policy objectives context. We see here the shift in the assessment base, the non-residential assessment base of cities across Alberta. You'll note that. No municipality has achieved this split. Indeed, many cities have seen their non-residential assessment share fall over the twenty year period. The average across all cities in this table here is actually a decline of one point four percent. An exception would be La Duque. Where a spillover of activity from Nisku. During a a high growth period for the energy sector affected the non-residential assessment base of the city considerably. Although the the aspiration of the sixty forty split is admirable and I think represents prudent financial management principles. It is quite aggressive in the context of the city's. Uh, previous absorption rates as well as what other municipalities have been able to achieve. Um, there are also some key land use planning and servicing considerations that suggest the Cran's lands would be better suited for residential development. Uh, notably, the lands border Carrot Creek and environmentally significant and major open space asset. Um, and are located immediately west of the Cran's Avenue lands designated as neighborhood. Uh, for the more Red Willow Park West Trail connections along Carrot Creek will be more appealing in our view to users moving through a residential area as compared to an industrial one. My colleague Sean will also uh expand on this idea that lands are readily readily serviceable. This is the uh a figure showing Cran's lands. Uh, so the. Brown on the west side of Carrot Creek is Cran's West. That's what we're talking about here today, and the east side is within the Shroel ASP. Uh, what you can see here is the orange line work and blue line work here that actually shows. Existing utilities along Range Road two sixty that are already in place to service the community center. Uh, within Shro lands. So these lands are actually on the west side of Carrot Creek. Readily serviceable basically right after uh the Car- um, Shroel ASP uh is developed. Uh, by byproduct, it's just an extension of a water line and sanitary line potentially across uh Carrot Creek. So the results of this study suggests that there is more than enough this designated employment area in the annexation area to meet the forecasted non-residential land demand. Changing land use designation of Cran's lands to the neighborhood. To allow residential development would not impede non-residential development in the annexation area. Uh, the neighborhood designation would be more compatible with the Avenue Shroel East Neighborhood Under Development to the East. And the Red Willow Park Master Plan, Carrot Creek, and would be consistent with the neighborhood designation. Applied to annexation lands adjacent to the west side of Carrot Creek uh on the city's northbound creek. So what we're asking for from council today is. We respectfully request that council support amending MDP MAP three urban structure and general land use plan to designate the Cran's West. Owned lands in the annexation area, uh, neighborhood for residential developments for the reasons given.
Thank you so much, gentlemen. I will um. Open it up for questions. Or actually, I'll, can you go back to the map? The green and the brown. So on the very far west side of the brown, is there an existing road down that way?
There's.
I'm just wondering where you would propose the transition from the residential to more of an industrial.
The uh residential or neighborhood we would propose uh in this area here. Uh, so we'd have going here, there's an access, and then also. Jero on the south side. So it'd be along the the property line there with potentially some buffering.
Is is there a road there? I'm not property line? Do you know?
I see a lease. I don't know if that's a private or a lease road. But I imagine in the future there would be some sort of road separating or buffering the two developments.
And so um. Cran's doesn't own anything west of there.
No.
And and they would be fine with industrial on that side?
That's right. If there is a transition or buffering with roadways, et cetera.
Okay. Uh, Council Hughes has a question. Thank you. Thanks for coming. So administration has explained to us that really the development of this land with servicing is probably going to be decades away. So I'm just wondering, what is the concern for it at the immediate time from your point of view?
We believe that as a result of the Shro area structure plan. Uh, and when these lands are developed, the services will be extended to adjacent Carrot Creek uh and also along Bill New Road. So these lands actually become. Readily developable as a byproduct of developing Shro area structure plan. It's an extension of the utilities.
Okay, so. In your timeline, you think that that it will be developed sooner than thirty years. I will ask administration about what you're saying, just so we have clarification after. But from your point of view, if that was the case. When would you foresee actually having, developing those lands?
It's a good question. That's a market specific question. I I don't have the uh the answer for you on that. I I would say. With the Shro ASP already being approved and in place. This is logically, could logically be the next area of structure plan adjacent to it, because there is already development happening in the Shro area. And that's subject to obviously market conditions and administration support.
And does the. Were you asking about the green or the brown sections? The brown section. Okay, so is the green? You might know, I guess, is that part of Shro?
Uh, yeah, that's correct. The green is part of Shro, and the greens indicating is Cran's owns the green area as well as the brown.
Right, and so is Cran's planning on. Working with rope hit and getting that that current. Um, area structure plan of Shro going on in your green portion there very soon?
Yeah, that's correct. Right now they've retained ISL to represent them to move that potentially forward.
All right. So we could see some houses popping up there much sooner than.
Yeah, when the green area for sure, and then the brown area would be the uh potentially the next logical development, uh, because their services are already kind of being extended to the green area.
Okay. Go ahead. Yeah. Okay, thank you. So. I I the other thing. I'm pretty, we understand administration's intention is to try to just get this. MDP approved since it's only been uh ten months in the waiting right now. Um, and then potentially make amendments after that. So even if this was designated as uh non-residential. There's been many a time where proponents come forward and ask to change it to residential, because they have an actual plan, and they're like, here it is. Would you change it? And. It often has been changed. For example, Heritage Lakes, the entirety of it was industrial and is now. Obviously, houses. Would that deter you from being able to do that? Or I realize that it's like simpler for you if you can get done now, but would that actually be an impediment for you to move forward?
It could be an impediment just strictly from a time and cost perspective. Uh, it's not just simply a MDP amendment application. There's various studies. And consulting studies as well as public consultation that needs to be done in order to update the plan. And so it'd be an impediment to proceed from a developer, from a landlord standpoint, given the amount of time it takes to do that, as well as the upfront cost or money. Uh, to complete that task.
Do you have any idea ballpark how much you're looking at? Just, I'm just trying to figure out how much of a burden we're putting on you. And if you don't, it's okay.
Are you talking application fee?
For the application fee, that all the studies, like how much, how much of a delay are you looking at just to get that stage completed, I guess, is what I'm looking at, and how much money?
I I'll just give you a high level range. By the time we're talking about application fees, public consultation and supporting background reports for administration review, we'd be looking at somewhere between eighty to a hundred and forty thousand dollars. And likely a year to year and a half uh delay.
Okay, thank you. Good, good question. Councilor Mansky.
Just one question uh through the mayor to the developer. Would that delay any of the development? Um, you know, if if the MDP went through as it's it as it is. Would it delay development in Shro? Being that the, what you're building there, people would be recognizing what's across from them, or do you suspect any change in that?
I I don't think it would delay the Shro um area structure plan or any of the development in Shro. Uh, the. Uh, extension of utilities across Carrot Creek would be uh coordinated with administration during the development stages of uh Shro.
Okay, do you believe it would make the Shro area less attractive?
Uh, I think it would make Shro less attractive to have industrial, especially anyone that is fronting Carrot Creek. To have them overlooking uh. Potential future employment lands rather than having uh, you know, an opportunity to look over residential lands. Uh, I think that would definitely. Hurt the uh absorption and saleability of those lines.
Thank you.
Councilor Bradhead.
Hey, Madam Mayor, um. It's interesting, uh, one of one of the stated objectives of this uh. MDP is to. Is to shift. Uh, the reliance of St. Albert on residential. Uh, to more less residential and to introduce more. Uh, commercial and industrial into our community. Uh, you put up a uh. A graph that said no community's ever been able to do that. Uh, and and I appreciate that. I got to tell you, in the twelve years that I've been on council, I've never had a developer come. And say, geez, I'd like to change my residential to commercial industrial. It's always been the other way. And and can you tell me why? Why? Why is industrial, commercial, less attractive? To you? Is it is it because you can turn your land over and develop it faster? Is is that what the issue is here?
Uh, I can probably speak to that, and then I'll probably hand it over to to Pierce. I'd say it comes down to development and economics, right? Is that the, like, in a capitalistic system. The development community will develop whatever they feel they could sell to the markets. And what is occurring right now with the forty sixty splits, uh, we understand it from a taxation perspective. But the FBM report that the city uh of St. Albert commissioned uh independently, and then the one that our uh client has commissioned. Both agree that the absorption rates are much lower. Than what is uh currently being anticipated as part of the growth plan. And so why the development community is is coming forward, our clients coming forward. To have that switched to neighborhood is because it's more viable. Uh, short and long term rather than employment lands. Uh, the conversation uh with our client has been basically having those as employment lands would sterilize those lands. Given how much employment lands are already within the MDP.
You understand the the difficulty, though. If we want to actually change our community, we actually hold firm on. On uh designating uh uh. Industrial and commercial land, and if we continually switch it back to uh. To residential, we're we're kind of shooting ourselves in the foot in terms of our own policy objectives. Right? And so. I I recognize this, but I suspect what's happening there is that uh proponents there say, well, you know, the absorption rate uh. Of commercial industrial uh is is uh is not fast enough for us to uh to turn our land over. Please turn it to residential. Which is what you're asking us to do.
Yeah, I think I'll get Pierce to to. Uh, thank you. Uh, through the chair, our our report did include a, an analysis of competitive factors. Uh, that might affect the city of St. Albert's uh ability to attract industrial development on the scale it's contemplated uh to achieve the sixty forty split. Uh, generally speaking, um, industrial development favors uh lands that are. In close proximity to key piece of infrastructure like an overdimensional uh corridor. They generally require or prefer lower levels of service. Um, and for those reasons, you typically see them in rural areas. Um, and so when you're competing to attract large scale industrial development, uh, you're competing with Atchison and Nisku and places like that. Um, and so certainly, um, designating lands for non-residential purposes to to provide an offering to the market is is something that should be done. But to recognize the competitive context, I think, is also important.
I appreciate that. I would suggest that uh Real South hasn't done too bad of late, though. So uh. St. Albert's problem has always been that we haven't had any commercial and industrial land to even offer. And so uh, so it's just interesting. I I appreciate the the proponent and uh and. And I understand where you're coming from. I. I also understand where our community needs. To. Fight to uh reduce the tax reliant on a residential rate pair. And the only way that we can do that is to bring in. Uh, other. Uh, types of development. And so. We're between a rock and a hard place here. Right? We either designate it and hold firm. Or we abandon our uh policy objective and 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 change it to residential. Because it's easier to absorb and easier to sell, easier to develop. I get all that. There's the conundrum, I think, that uh that this council is facing. Thank you.
All right, any more questions for uh either Pierce or Sean? All right, seeing none, and if you have further questions or administration as a result of their presentation, that's um. Coming up next, but now I have um. I've got Pierce up again. Is that correct, Pierce?
Yes.
Okay. And Constance?
I'm fine.
Okay, thanks, Connie. And Mike, are you, sorry, Mr. Keating, are you going to speak as well?
Yeah.
All right, so I'll invite you all up. And you now are speaking. Uh, Terry, are you speaking? You know, you just want here to answer questions. Good. And. This is uh the piece of land west of Reg given drive in Lakeview Business District. Whenever you're ready.
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll begin the presentation, and my colleagues Connie and uh Michael will. Um, take over. Uh, for clarity's purposes, like, we've got a little map up here indicating the piece of land that we're uh speaking about now. Um, so you can see it's uh north of Big Lakes and uh west of Reg Given Drive. Uh, these are the city port lands outlined in red. As we all know, the city's MDP proposed by law amendment uh designated employment areas is being focused on industrial and office uses with complementary commercial amenities and services as well as institutional uses. It also designates mixed use employment areas as being uh light industrial, office and accessory, small scale standalone retail uses. It it does prohibit large scale warehousing and distribution areas. The rest ASP uh under preparation aligns with the MDP to prohibit a large scale commercial development at city port. Um, our firm was engaged uh to analyze the market for non-residential land. Does a city determine if a shift in the city's land use focus from industrial to uh. Development in city port to allow for large scale commercial is consistent with future market conditions. We've got this graphic again. I won't belabor uh the point. What we would note is that the city port lands were included as as uh. Industrial as part of that sixty forty analysis that was reflected in the growth study. Again, uh, not attached to any market analysis, and we believe that the designation of these lands as industrial will actually impede. Uh, the timely development of absorption of these lands uh and a shift to commercial. What's happened? Is it is consistent with the city's objective of bringing on non-residential lands, um, while likely uh. Uh, reducing the time that that will, that that will be required to achieve that objective. I'm going to turn it over now to Michael, uh, who can speak about uh potential opportunity at the site.
Thanks. City Port um has highly motivated commercial clients wanting to develop on City Port lands adjacent to Reg Given. Drive in the Lakeview Business District because of its prime locational attributes. Some commercial clients vying for a position in the city port lands include too small. Uh, and large scale supermarket chains with warehousing. Large scale retailers seeking twenty to forty thousand square feet for showroom. Uh, slash warehouse development, a large scale hotel with convention and event space. A convenience store with gas station, car wash, and multiple food restaurants. Connie?
Thank you. Current MDP policies for employment and mixed use employment areas restrict the types and scale of commercial use development. Large scale commercial uses, you just heard Mr. Keating list. Or City Port would not be allowed in these areas without MDP policies being amended. Commercial uses that are allowed are not defined in the MDP currently, and that leads to developer and investor uncertainty. The Metro Region Growth Plan's definition for local employment area is localized area with industrial, commercial. And or institutional uses that have locally significant business and economic activities. Promoting a broad range of industrial and commercial opportunities. Amending the city's MDP employment and mixed use employment area policies. To better align with this definition would permit more types and scale of commercial use opportunities in these areas. City Port owners want to be able to respond in a timely manner to large scale commercial opportunities you heard Mr. Keating talk to. For the reasons given, we respectfully ask the council not approve file L one twenty twenty two today. And that at this time, MDP policy amendments be amended. So that. They address this issue, this policy issue with the mixed use employment area and employment area to expand the types and scale of commercial uses. Including large commercial uh development. On timing, we ask that these MDP policy amendments be approved before the West ASP comes to council. So that subsequent MDP and West ASP policy amendments will be required of City Board. So on timing, again, that is well within the five years to a point from Council McKay earlier. And time is of the essence as we consider the opportunities in front of City Port today. Thank you.
Awesome. Thanks, Connie. Can you go back to slide seven, the one that Mike spoke to about possible? Thanks, Connie. Can you go back to slide seven, the one that Mike spoke to about possible? So too small and large, so supermarket with warehousing. Retailer with show home. Okay, so and then. Hotel, commuters. Okay, perfect. And now can you go slide eight? Okay, so it's it's so it's more about the policies than the colors on the map right now.
That I would say the difficulty we have with the map, would we love to change the conceptual map you've got in the M D P? Yes, because what City Port would like would be the mixed use employment area for all of their lands. Founding Ray Given Drive, but what you have is a conceptual illustration on that map. Of a conceptual mixed use employment node. So that'll be addressed more detail wise in the what in the West A S P. But at this time, it's a thirty thousand foot level.
Right.
So the problem is with the policies. And I can tell you specifically with fourteen point seven point one employment areas, if we were to look at that policy. It enables a range of light and medium industrial uses, office, as Pierce said. And complimentary, commercial, service and institutional uses. Complementary isn't defined.
Okay.
And then we go on and we look at the mixed use employment areas policies. Fourteen point eight point one encourage a range of wholly enclosed light industrial uses. As well as office development and accessory and small scale standalone retail uses, not large scale. And also I point to fourteen point eight point two prohibit large scale warehousing and distribution uses. For some of these uses that Mr. Keating has spoken to, these are retail uses with associated warehousing. So these are the issues. And could we, if this were approved today, proceed with following approval of the West A S P? Do a neighborhood plan? No, we could not. We would have to amend the M D P for these purposes. As well as the West A S P, which is now aligning with this M D P.
Right, okay. And I would see the large scale hotel with convention space fitting and none of that.
It depends on how the new land you sign up defines things.
Okay, all right, so. All right, Council Kilik has a question. Then I probably will get more clarification from staff when we get there. Council Kilik?
Thank you. In regard to the proposed. Or possible. Uses that you've identified here, could they be accommodated without having direct access on to Ray Given? Because we're trying to keep Ray Given as a, you know, flow through.
Right, there there would not be direct access onto Ray Given, and I believe that is part of what. Mr. Keating has conveyed to the commercial clients he's been in discussion with.
Okay, so it wouldn't affect our transportation plan for that? Okay, thank you.
Okay, Council Hughes, thank you. So what is your timeline for developing in a perfect world?
Well, we had started to stop because in May of twenty twenty one, we spoke with administration about a potential neighborhood plan. And our intentions there. And if you indulge me, I can show you what we showed them in twenty twenty one. This is the plan we showed in twenty twenty one. And City Port's lands are adjacent, as I said, to Ray Given Drive. And you see the pink area. We're showing adjacent to Ray Given Drive. And in that area, we were looking for at that time, commercial. Of a larger scale, so it was mixed use employment. And it was commercial, business, retail, some light industrial, institutional. So we were looking on City Port's approximately eighty two acres to have that opportunity. That would have accommodated, we would hope, for large scale commercial. We've heard more than once from administration that the current M D P policies won't accommodate that.
So. Let's let's just assume just for a second that these were amended and they were much more open. We still have to get that area serviced, which we are having discussions administration shortly, I believe, to figure out a plan. And the costing for it, because it's not going to be cheap. But so it's assumed that we're moving forward at government speed. And the amendments at some point in the next six months were prepped for it. What would be your time? Because you have it that you said you'd like to have the amendments made prior to you coming to it. When when are you hoping to bring something forward?
What ideally we would like to do is to begin work on a neighborhood plan. For the uses that we contemplate for City Port's lands concurrent while the West A S P is under development. So that we could bring that neighborhood plan forward following the approval of the West A S P.
So we're looking at like twelve months, you're hoping, or I don't even know anymore what where we are with plans for ourselves.
Well, I believe you're looking at, I think it's summer of next year, summer, early fall of next year for the West A S P. And under the city's new two tier process, we would then be in a position to come forward for the neighborhood plan approvals through Adrian.
Okay, so. So you're hoping before the end of next year, really, that that you'd materialize it. We probably still wouldn't have servicing there. We're still figuring out how we're going to get. Pipes and stuff in the ground over to that. At least not full servicing over to Lakeview would be my suspicion by this time next year. So does that influence? Because I mean, it's just the plan, then you still have to make it happen. Would that influence you or do you still have a same type of timeline understanding about our servicing?
For those for those May twenty twenty one discussions, we had already started to look at servicing for the City Port lands. Any servicing that is done in Lakeview would have to come through City Port's lands. And I do have Mr. Novak here, who is the engineer for City Port, who would give you a more precise answer than I am, if I could.
On the servicing side, the CN rail line there, there is the north interceptor sanitary trunk already through the lens. And from a water standpoint, there is already a water line along the rural road. That extends north through to Shuro. So there is water and sanitary servicing adjacent to the area. It's just stormwater management facility that would need to be constructed.
Okay, because I'm not sure how I think it's going to go today, but there is the possibility that even if we prove it today. We could put a motion forward to address these to open up the ability for us to make amendments prior to next year.
And could I comment? I think there was a question through the mayor to members of council. There was discussion, well, then we would have to take this back to the E M R B. And so far as you've already received the E M R B approval for your employment areas, what we're asking is. To have a more level or even focus on the commercial and industrial. And the employment area to accommodate City Port's intentions. So you're not offside of the E M R B's definition of local employment area in this regard.
Council McKay? I'll be quick because I I'm assuming you've seen the background or I'm don't I'm. You seem to be, sorry Connie, you seem to be the one that's talking. I'm assuming you've read the response from administration. So I'm somewhat. Confused in relation to the fact that they're saying that it's unclear whether amendments would be necessary because nothing's been. Presented to them to review, but then you've just provided us with some materiality to say that there has been. So where's the disconnect?
There really frankly is no disconnect. There's rather some direction, or if you will, from administration. To encourage us to bring forward a neighborhood plan following approval of the West A S P. So we're we're in a bit of that that purgatory period. And so for this opportunity today to come forward and to say. While we're here, can we not just fix these these policies to accommodate what we intend to develop? So that we can get on with developing the neighborhood plan and bring it forth with after West A S P approval.
So it it speaks to certainty, but it speaks to timeliness or it speaks to convenience or all three?
In fairness, all three, but I'd have to say that there is a financial consideration too and a time delay. Should we have to do, because this these policy amendments are not made today? Should we have to do an M D P amendment and concurrent West A S P member amendment? You will have just approved those documents and the cost to do a citywide M D P amendment. You heard from from Mr. Novak with the consultation that would be required included in that. I was estimating around a hundred and twenty, but it could be a hundred and forty depending on the studies required. Then in addition to that, the West A S P amendment on top, so that's more application fees and more stuff.
Thank you.
I see them are questions, but I have one quick last one. When we approved the M D P, which was April of last year, I think it was April. Did you request these policy changes at that time?
I'm going to bring up Mr. Derby because I I wasn't working with at that time. But I can tell you, I watched the public hearing. And I do recall that my predecessor, Olga Lovett, spoke to council on the commercial use interests that City Port had. And I'll let Dave Derby elaborate. So.
Yeah, and while Dave's coming up. Because today's amendment is about the annex lands, right? So so policy changes should have been made last April and or an application with subsequent fees sadly. So just wondering. Come to the mic, Dave, just.
I'm going to let Dave talk for a second, but I will try and answer that. If you recall as well, the city planning folks have just changed their process to the two tier process. Which has been challenging to navigate that and those changes and getting that approved. But I will say as well, even though this is focused on the annex lands coming in and being designated. The designations that are being applied to those lands are the same designations applied to City Port's lands. And we see them as problematic in their. Over focus on industrial when nonresidential employment lands include or should include commercial to a greater extent. That Mr. Nichols has spoken to.
You thought you were going to get off the hook. Just sit and watch.
Connie is correct. Olga Lovett did come and make a presentation. And beyond that, we have had numerous discussions with administration over the last couple of years, trying to get some traction on where we want to go. And the ball just keeps getting kicked down the road. Keeps asking. Administration has told us that they want to take the best of all the commercial land uses that they have currently. And combine them into something specific for the Lakeview properties. It's all been talked to this point. They haven't said this is what we're going to do. So that's why we're talking here today and saying we need clarity on where we're going.
So if we hadn't annexed all this land, we wouldn't be here today. Would you have, if we hadn't done the annexation, we wouldn't be here today? We would have been approved M D P. Would you be filing through due process to change not the maps? And I and I like that, actually, I like the policy to broaden land uses. Would that have been the road you would have taken?
If the problem was with the policies in not allowing large scale commercial, we would have had to come forward with an M D P amendment saying. It wasn't done at the time it was approved. And we're we're back here again, because our belief is that the location from City Port lends itself. To this this large scale commercial development and the commercial clients that are interested have underscored that point.
Okay, excellent. I think I have no more. Oh, Council McKay, go ahead.
I just need clarity while in relation to your last slide as to what you want from council today. Because I mean, right now, we're just talking as the mayor has mentioned about amendments and then not policy changes because that. That's throwing all the whole thing out again. So I just need clarity as to what you're looking for.
Specifically looking for policy text amendments. To the M D P mixed use employment area policies and employment area policies. So that would be policies fourteen point seven point one, fourteen point eight point one. And fourteen point eight point two. And I'm I'm focused on that at this point because I said the M D P map is conceptual. But we'll be back with a West A S P amendment. If we aren't able to negotiate through that plan development process, mixed use employment on all of City Port's lands.
And you have no proposed text amendments to those policies?
It's it's the inclusion of large scale commercial to both fourteen point seven point one. And fourteen point eight point one. And then fourteen point eight point two, the statement of concern to us reads prohibit. Large scale warehousing and distribution uses. Look, for example, I take the supermarket. There may be a related warehouse component to that retail use. Likewise, I believe in the list that Mr. Keating had, it was. A retail facility. I'm just going to be very clear here.
And I don't think it's IKEA, Council Kilik.
Maybe the brick.
What we have is a large scale retailer seeking twenty five thousand square feet for showroom warehouse development. And right now, the way the policies read, it says standalone accessory, small scale retail, which just doesn't cut it.
Right. I think this will have to have some conversations with the staff. So essentially inclusion of large scale commercial, did you say? And warehousing?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions? All right, and I think that's it for registered speaking. Is that am I correct? That's the end of the registered speaking? Okay, council, back to our administration. Is there anything that? You want to ask based on any of those presentations? Council McKay?
I'm just going to start off with, I guess, going all the way back to the middle presentation in relation to. The brown area and the green area, and then there was identification of potential already existing utilities. Would that be something that we can tie into or do we need to actually? And I maybe this is a question that planning can't answer, but I I mean, we're talking about moving a lot of. Utilities and tie-ins from into existing large scale infrastructure. So is there something that's already existing on the west side of Ray Given Drive that that we can. Shortcut and already get access to or I was just curious because like they identified in their presentation. That orange area along the wall or along the one area.
I'm gonna let Adrian respond to this. I see he put up his hand.
Yeah, so I'll I'll try to speak to it first, Council McKay. Everything to the west of Carrot Creek. To my understanding, based based on our annexation studies was in a separate servicing basin. Which means that it immediately becomes more expensive to service. And when we, when we looked at the annexation lands and we've looked at the land development for this, for one. None of this would be available without the city front ending the amount of servicing that we have to bring land across. Ray Given. So this is a fairly new. I I guess a option in and of itself. There would be no development, not a city port, any of this would be. Even on the table at this point, had the city not put forward this servicing. But west of Carrot Creek is an entirely different servicing basin, which means it's immediately more expensive to go into that servicing basin. And leapfrog what we have not developed in Shuro. We've we've literally approved two subdivisions. Well, we've conditionally approved two subdivision stages for Shuro. So you're talking a decade plus of development in Shuro. And then you're talking about going to the west side of Carrot Creek. And now we're also having to have a talk about where do we offset the nonresidential land? That we're talking that these applicants are talking about taking out. Because the annexation and the M D P were tied together very specifically to come up with this sixty forty split. And when we start talking about, well, we should take out however many acres it is, a hundred sixty, two hundred acres of land. And make that residential instead of nonresidential. That has significant implications on the future financial viability of the city. And where do we relocate those opportunities elsewhere? So long answer to a short question.
No, not at all, and I appreciate it. I don't want to get into a they said, they said situation. But I mean, can you respond to their response in relation to your administration's response about? And particularly the last presentation is unclear if, when, where amendments would be necessary, for instance, because. There's no application or concept for you to review. I I I mean, I don't want to get into that. he said, he said kind of conversation, but I can, I I want to give you an opportunity to respond though, too.
I'll I'll try to start and then maybe Christine can fill in some gaps. So if we talk about the Cityport lands in particular, if you go back to last year, I believe it was the the property owners came in at the end of the MDP process. They did not participate in any of the MDP meetings and at that point, the community feedback that we had gotten through the seventeen thousand individual feedback points from three years of public engagement was to make that employment on the south and mixed employment on the north. And we had multiple discussions with the owners of the Cityport lands at that time. And we felt like we probably probably could accommodate a lot of what they wanted to do, some of what they wanted to do. There's a distinction between MDP level ideas about what land uses work and ASP or neighborhood plan level land uses and what work and the land use bylaw. And we are literally like this week reviewing the industrial districts right now, so nobody outside of the room of four people that was in that room has a has a concrete idea of what those uses are right now. That can be in the industrial or the CIS or the BP two or whatever we come up with for those land use districts. So there's a lot of kind of different. I I think I think we're getting confused about the levels of policy and regulation that we're approving right now. We're talking about a plan to a hundred thousand people and a very broad interpretation of employment and mixed employment. And we've got a property owner that has come in with concerns about some very specific applications. And and I understand that entirely, but I think that those are two very different things. And as far as the timing goes. They can be working, I mean, I I guess w- we've, I think we've tried to extend ourselves as much as we possibly can as administration to work with this property owner to to give them guidance on how they can proceed with a neighborhood plan as we work on the area structure plan because as I've said, without without the servicing that the city put in last year, this is all dead in the water and we're not having this discussion. Now that the city has done this, we're doing the next levels to try to identify those major servicing corridors, those major transportation corridors. And there there has to be a next step and whether whether people like it or not, that that's part of the land development process. There are processes in place, there are technical studies in place that are required to make this happen.
I just thought it's Council, if I could jump in and Council Hughes pointed out, you're the chair, do whatever you want. So Adrian, you said you have provided guidance. What guidance have you provided? Like, what is the what is the route for them to achieve their goals?
We've provided them, well, a- again, like I said, well. There's it, there's been a substantial amount of interaction between the parties on this file. Even going to the fact of how the land was marketed and and how that conflicted with the MDP at the time. I will say that we have worked with them again to try to identify paths forward where the city is taking on the major risk or the major responsibility for getting this area structure plan approved for that entire Lakeview Business District. And then they can come in shortly thereafter with their neighborhood plan. And whether, I mean, without us, they would have had to do the whole, the entire thing. So they're actually saving time by having the city leave this, in in my opinion, anyway, the the city is leading this and we're making good progress. We intend to be back before council with the ASP by middle of next year. And then we'll be following up with our own neighborhood plan for our lands and they can submit their own neighborhood plans at that time.
Okay, I can I keep going? Okay, okay, so. I think what I'm hearing though from from Cityport is that you're developing an area structure plan that conforms to the MDP. But their neighborhood structure plan will not conform to that. And so you're doing a plan in one direction and they're they're going in another and unless the conversation about the land use bylaw and what is what is allowed for industrial uses and large commercial warehousing is still yet to come. Is that is that still yet to come? And then you'd be proposing a change to policy?
I'll just start maybe Christine and then you jump in. Are we are developing our plan, our area structure plan based on the approved council approved municipal development plan? And if their plans are out of step with that, they should be coming in with an amendment to the MDP. That's it's a simple, it's a simple as that.
Yeah.
And Christine, go ahead.
Yeah, and I'll just provide a bit of context. So today we heard a little bit about some of the ideas and put potential development that is being considered. Let's talk about a large warehouse with some retail. We've talked about that a lot extensively. You look at our current, not our future, but already approved land use districts for industrial development and the significant amount of the items that, now I don't have all the details about them, but a significant amount of them are actually listed uses within some of our industrial districts, hotels within there. You can have a gas station, you can have some of these things. Warehousing is definitely within it. So I, we don't have, we have not been provided all of those details from the applicant. I think it's probably because it's still exploratory. I don't want to presuppose. But I guess this is where in our minds a lot of the things that they've talked about are still enabled. And if there are one or two things that may be outside of the standard, we write zoning to cover about ninety five percent of all applications. If there's one particular use that may not be within a industrial district, that's when you come to council and ask. I don't know. I'll just say if IKEA wants to come here, let's ask council if we want IKEA here, right? So that's when you come back and you'd ask for that amendment at that time. I think the issue is we're still as administration putting things together, we're following the direction as provided through the MDP, which was approved by council. So as administration, we're not enabled to suggest other things when we're considering applications. Unless it's an amendment and it's going to cancel. Adrian, I see your hand up.
If I can, I just wanted to mention there was you know, a lot of mention about the lack of demand for what the community has identified as their aspirational goal for these lands. And I think Council Broadhead had spoken to it. The the city, I I mean, if you do what you always do, you'll get what you always got. And the city through this aspirational policy document said, we want to really move the needle on the tax share for residents. To that end, over the past six years, the city has brought on one point eight million square feet of absorbed industrial land, over a hundred thirty one acres. It took forty years for the city to to absorb two point five million square feet. In the last fifteen years, we absorbed another two point five million square feet. We've got a major commercial broker that is interested in assembling a major amount of land in the employment lands as we speak right now because of the transportation logistics that that site affords. So just because our pace was slow to begin with doesn't reflect, in my opinion, anyway, the fact that we didn't have servicing on that side of the road and that there aren't opportunities for the city to shift the needle, or we can continue to develop the way that we have, which as we know, leaves the 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 residents with the tax burden that I think this council and past councils have said they want to go away from.
Agreed. But of course, this proposed changes about having warehouses is still non-residential, but would would achieve our goal, but. Council Mackay, I interrupted your questions. I'll let you finish and then I might have something for debate later. Sorry.
No, I I, the next one would just going to be administration in relation to process, but I'm I might wait for that. Like, I mean, you know, like as one proponent spoke to, they were looking for policy changes versus amendments versus, so I mean, I would need some comment on that, but I I might I'm gonna hold it, but.
Yeah. And and you know what? We did take a few minutes break two hours ago, so why don't we take a ten minute break here? It's five to four according to that and like a quarter after. Let's give us a good stretch. Or ten after, let's do ten after. And then I'll come to Council Hughes and Council Minsky. So let's just take a stretch because I think we need it. I need to just take a break. So we'll see you guys all back in your chairs at four ten.
You were up.
Okay, although all the staff went away and didn't come back.
Sure, they just turned their cameras off.
It's okay. Okay, Adrian, I'm gonna keep it really short, but I just need to tell you that you look just like Jim at the office. It's just like you have exactly that setting or creed, but younger, um, anyway, um. Quick question, and then I'm done. So the land use planning, I know you're trying to accommodate and worry about uh the employment areas with this latest thing that we're coming discussion with, the land use planning is gonna have that coming for at the end of March, right? Or that's what the intention is by the end of March, because I know we're talking about changing commercial. Is that also the timeline for this, or is there a different timeline to handle uh, that category of stuff?
Could you, could you repeat, are you asking about the land use bylaw versus the timing of the ASP?
Not the ASP yet, because you said that there's, you know, within the land use bylaw, there was discussion about updating things.
Yeah, yeah.
Be more flexible, so when is the land use bylaw, you're, because when we discussed it before with the commercial just a few weeks ago, you were saying you're, it was gonna be by the end of March, will that include this as well, or is that just a commercial section?
Uh, yes, Council Hughes, um. So the, the land use bylaw is anticipated to be presented to council for first reading somewhere towards the end of Q two right now. And uh, as I said, we literally, over the last couple of days, have been looking at the CIS district, a different type of industrial district, so a commercial industrial district, and maybe a more intensive industrial district and the business park, business, business park two districts, so those non, non residential, more industrial uses. We've literally been reviewing those just in the last couple of days to try to see what we can consolidate, how we can expand, what type of performance, performance measures uh would be involved, et cetera. And that is intended to come back. It's, it's roughly, it's, it's not very far off from the actual ASP itself, but somewhere late Q two of twenty twenty three. We anticipate first reading for the land use bylaw, and at that point, what we, I, I should say, we do have public engagement in the, in the interim, so I think in January, we'll be doing some stuff. We actually have a cultivate the conversation survey about a few things that is getting posted, I wanna say next week. Um, to get ideas about, about how people perceive different land uses and land use conflicts, et cetera. But yes, it's anticipated to be end of Q two twenty three uh that we come back first reading for the land use bylaw.
So when I talked to you, uh, when we brought forward that concern that they had about the river boardwalk district, and you were saying Q one, so basically, is it the same one, or are we just our, our plate's gotten a little full and now are pushing it back to Q two?
Uh, well, so we added, um, we're adding a little bit of front end engagement that we what, what happened was we did it, we did engagement at the farmer's market, we got some good feedback, and then we added a little bit more uh, engagement, which is costing us potentially a couple of weeks, which pushes, pu- pushes us into Q two, but it's the same thing, so um, consolidation of land use districts, specifically focusing on the non residential districts, and specifically on non residential uses is what we're working on.
Okay, thank you, that's it for questions.
Okay, uh, Council Bremansky.
Thank you through the mayor to administration again, um, on this, if this municipal development plan is passed second and third reading today. Um, I think what our, I guess our response has been to the developers is that, you know, we want industrial land, we don't want what you're proposing, so um, what are their chances of getting the application fees approved if we still stand by that, you know, that mindset in our municipal development plan?
I, I can.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, ma- maybe I could just take a stab at it, I think the chances are ultimately, it's, it's, it's your approval, um, at the end of the day. So if the proper procedures are followed in terms of the application, administration would make a recommendation, um, but council has the final say. I stand to be corrected uh by Christina or Adrian, um. So ul- ultimately, uh, council's decision will rule it in.
So it's the same decision today, essentially.
I, I would say, I guess, the same decision, but with significantly more analysis uh and detail. Um, because we have not had that, uh, as we talk specifically about, uh, in particular, uh, the city portlands.
Thank you.
All right, I have no more people pushing uh, question buttons. So process wise, we've had our question, the presentation admin, questions, public questions, and now back to admin for questions. So, um, if I see no more questions, the next step would be your request to make a motion to close the public hearing, and then, um, thank you, cuts, and then I'll get somebody to do second reading. And if anyone has any proposed amendments, that would be when we would take them an amendment to second reading. Uh, and if I don't see any amendments to second reading, we can go on to third, and then if there's any subsequent follow up motions, might even be a notice of motion to direct administration into future MDPs, we could, we can have that conversation, so Council Mackay, let's post the public hearing.
Not one I can do, the, the public hearing on bylaw one twenty twenty two be closed.
You like the easy motions. Agenda. Call for the vote.
Satisfying.
I'm gonna get you to do second reading. That motion passes unanimously. Uh, does anyone want to do second reading? Council Broadhead, go ahead. I know it's a race, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That bylaw one slash twenty twenty two be an amendment one to the municipal development plan be read a second time.
Awesome, um, any amendments to second reading? All right, Council Broadhead, oh, Council Bremansky.
Okay, could I, um, Mayor, could I get clarification if, uh, the amendment could just read that the, uh, suggested changes be added to the municipal deplan- plan? Or would it have to be referred back to administration for?
You would have to be very specific on what changes you're looking for. We've got three different areas of land, I don't, I don't, I don't even know what you're referring to.
All three? Yes.
Uh, yeah, you would need to be much more specific, Council River Mansky, um, cuz for example, um, but the Krantz ones, I think are pretty obvious, but, um, we have no suggested changes for MDP policy amendments yet, and if you do that, we are looking at probably six, eight month delay because policies are gonna take a while and would have to go back to EMRB. So that's why I say subsequent to this, we could have a conversation on what, what direction we might wanna give staff for the next MDP, or, or I will let you do whatever you want, but I just want you to be specific.
Okay, or delaying the reading? Or just voting against the reading, I guess, would probably be the easy.
If, if, we, we don't do three, we're not doing three readings, so there's no unanimous consent, so, um, you would have to make a motion to postpone. Is that right, motion?
Okay, I'll, I'll leave it for now, I'll just, uh, vote.
Yeah, I think, I think this conversation's not gonna be lost.
Right, good.
All right. So no specific amendments at this time. Council Broadhead, I'll accept your motion. Did you have any opening comments?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I appreciate, uh, all, all the work that's gone in to flourish, right from the, right from the get go. Uh, it was one of the most widely, uh, distributed and sought after feedback from our, uh, from our community as best as possible, I think, uh, the number was seventeen thousand, uh, comments or something like that, uh, Adrian, correct me the, the number there. But, uh, in any case, the city and the people of St. Albert had huge input into this particular plan. And I, I just believe that what we need to do now is move ahead with the plan, cuz what we are here around today is just the annexed land. And there's a, there's some legitimate concerns by developers to be sure, and they're basking some, uh, some good questions. But nonetheless, I don't think any of them are, are showstoppers within the next five years. So in any case, what I would suggest is that, uh, we pass this, uh, amendment to the, uh, MDP. Move on, uh, deal with the issues of, uh, policy. And then as time moves on and we see, uh, how our city develops, and, uh, to the point, we don't wanna continue to build the city of the past, we wanna build the city of the future. And then, uh, and then when, uh, lands to the west of, uh, Kirk Creek come up for development, and there's a, uh, a need for more, uh, residential land, then fair enough at that time. But as it stands today, we want to make a change to our community. And part of that is that we want to shift the tax burden away from our residents onto a, a broader, uh, base, uh, that includes, uh, industrial and commercial. So, and that's part of what flourish is all about. And so, uh, I'm, I'm hoping council, uh, supports this.
All right, anyone else have any comments? All right. Council Hughes.
Well, thank you. So I'm gonna be voting in favor of this because I appreciate what all of the speakers came and gave us their opinions and their concerns. And the document is as, as good as it could have been when it read it for, that doesn't mean it's perfect or there doesn't need tweaking. But the intention of this MDP amendment is specifically to address the annexation lands and specifically just, just, just the map and get this completed. So that we've met our requirements with the MRB, et cetera, to acknowledge that we have these lands in our boundaries and that we, um, have plans for them, and whatever the plans changed can be, we have them and we want to acknowledge that this is our complete picture in our MDP, so that is really the intention today. And the intention is not to say that we're trying to stifle development or try to stop any of the policy change that may be for discussion in the future. And we can still have motions to that effect as early as like next month, to say if we need to, but we'll have discussions with administration to see where things are going, and then see if there's any gaps that need to be addressed, because I do think that this council is definitely focused on economic development and trying to get uh, to be flexible and, and putting, considering all sides when we're trying to increase the industrial base, so I have no problems with trying to have that discussion, but as far as today goes, I don't wanna have additional delays, the MDP and delaying it for months and trying to accomplish something, which what we really need to do is have those amendments, and amendments need to be kind of thought through carefully, and we won't be able to accomplish that goal tonight. So I think that I'm gonna vote in favor of this so that it comes to a complete picture, and then we can discuss amendments after that. And that's, and that's why I'm very comfortable with this, I don't think we're trying to stave the development at all at this point, we're just trying to get this going, and then we can have amendments after the policy is actually created, that's it.
Anyone else? All right, um, Council Hughes and Council Broadhead, uh, said it really well, um, this is really about um, welcoming in the annexation lands, that's really what we're talking about today, um, and putting that colors on the map. And, and Council Hughes, when you said thoughtful amendments, that's bang on, right, we wouldn't wanna be, um, we, we, we approach this on what we're gonna do to annex lands, not what we're doing with the current lands inside. Speaking to the three suggested changes, um, in the Miz lands, I, I there was some suggestion that, you know, administrations change and people are gone, and they won't remember that they said this, well, can move, well, that's what a public hearings for. They've requested it, it's in writing our response, that that line is just very high level, it's temporary, it can change at any time when you get more specific and lower in the elevation of, of planning, so I, I, I'm confident that we don't need to hold up the MDP tonight, that that, that land can, that line, that dotted line can be moved to accommodate, um, good development in that area based on good data, um. When, when it talks about the Krantz lands, um, I, I, I can see how residential on both sides of the creek would actually be, uh, quite good and quite positive for development. I just tried to figure out how that transition to industrial would look. I, I, the question, I can't remember who asked it about servicing, was it you? And it's actually not as readily serviced as, as suggested, that kind of made me think, well, then let's just get the MDP done today. And, um, talk about those lands, we, we still have a long ways, we still have Rohit's lands, and then we have, um, the green part of Shuro that Krantz owns, get that done, and then we can talk about what the future looks like. And finally, on, um, on the what is it, I wanna call it Coda. Good to go, it's gonna be hard to get rid of Coda, um. I have a feeling that as, as it was pointed out, um, warehousing is already allowed in our industrial lands, like this is still needs to be flushed out, and I'm very empathetic and understand what you guys wanna build. You could put a gas, you said small commercial, but you could still do, or small, small convenience, some of that could probably go in, but I, I think what you're asking is going to be achieved, um, through the conversation, and if not, then the process is there. This, this process.
So when I talked to, uh, when we brought forward that concern that they had about the river boardwalk district and you were saying Q one. So basically is it the same one? Or are we just, our, our plate's gotten a little full and now are pushing it back to Q two?
Uh, well, so we added, um, we're adding a little bit of front end engagement that we what, what happened was we did it, we did engagement at the farmer's market. We got some good feedback and then we added a little bit more uh, engagement, which is costing us potentially a couple of weeks, which pushes, pushes us into Q two, but it's the same thing. So um, consolidation of land use districts specifically focusing on the non residential districts. And specifically on non residential uses is what we're working on.
Okay, thank you. That's it for questions.
Okay, uh, Council Brumansky.
Thank you through the mayor to administration again. Um, on this, if this municipal development plan is passed second and third reading today. I think what our, I guess our response has been to the developers is that, you know, we want industrial land. We don't want what you're proposing. So um, what are their chances of getting the application fees approved if we still stand by that? You know, that mindset in our municipal development plan?
I, I can.
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, maybe I could just take a stab at it. I think the chances are ultimately it's, it's, it's your approval. Um, at the end of the day. So if the proper procedures are followed in terms of the application, administration would make a recommendation, uh, but council has the final say. I stand to be corrected, uh, by Christina or Adrian. Um, so ultimately, uh, council's decision will rule it in.
So it's the same decision today, essentially.
I, I would say, I guess the same decision, but with significantly more analysis and detail. Um, because we have not had that, uh, as we talk specifically about, uh, in particular, uh, the city Portland.
Thank you.
All right, I have no more people pushing uh, question buttons. So process wise, we've had our question, the presentation admin questions, public questions, and now back to admin for questions. So, um, if I see no more questions, the next step would be our request to make a motion to close the public hearing and then, um, thank you, cuts remark. And then I'll get somebody to do second reading. And if anyone has any proposed amendments, that would be when we would take them an amendment to second reading. Uh, and if I don't see any amendments to second reading, we can go on to third. And then if there's any subsequent follow up motions, might even be a notice of motion to direct administration into future MDPs, we could, we can have that conversation. So Council Mackay, let's close the public hearing.
Not one I can do. The, the public hearing on by law one twenty twenty two be closed.
You like the easy motions. Agenda. Call for the vote.
Is that a slam?
I'm going to get you to do second reading. That motion passes unanimously. Uh, does anyone want to do second reading? Council Broadhead, go ahead. I know it's a race. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. That by law one slash twenty twenty two be an amendment one to the municipal development plan be read a second time.
Awesome. Um, any amendments to second reading? All right, Council brought it, oh, Council Brumansky.
Okay, could I, um, Mayor, could I get clarification if, uh, the amendment could just read that the, uh, suggested changes be added to the municipal de plant, plan? Or would it have to be referred back to administration for?
You would have to be very specific on what changes you're looking for. We've got three different areas of land. I don't, I don't, I don't even know what you're referring to. All three?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, you would need to be much more specific, Council River Mansky, um, because for example, um, but the Krantz ones I think are pretty obvious, but, um, we have no suggested changes for MDP policy amendments yet. And if you do that, we are looking at probably six, eight month delay because policies are going to take a while and would have to go back to EMRB. So that's why I say subsequent to this, we could have a conversation on what, what direction we might want to give staff for the next MDP or, or I will let you do whatever you want, but I just want you to be specific.
Okay, or delaying the reading? Or just voting against the reading, I guess, would probably be the easy.
We, we don't do three, we're not doing three readings. So there's no unanimous consent. So, um, you would have to make a motion to postpone. Is that right? Motion.
Okay, I'll, I'll leave it for now. I'll just vote.
Yeah, I think, I think this conversation is not going to be lost.
Right.
All right. So no specific amendments at this time. Council Broadhead, I'll accept your motion. But do you have any opening comments?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate, uh, all, all the work that's gone in to flourish right from the, right from the get go. Uh, it was one of the most widely, uh, distributed and sought after feedback from our, uh, from our community as best as possible. I think, uh, the number was seventeen thousand, uh, comments or something like that. Uh, Adrian, correct me the, the number there, but, uh, in any case, the city and the people of St. Albert had huge input into this particular plan. And I, I just believe that what we need to do now is move ahead with the plan because what we are here around today is just the annexed land. And there's a, there's some legitimate concerns by developers to be sure. And they're basking some, uh, some good questions. But nonetheless, I don't think any of them are, are showstoppers within the next five years. So in any case, what I would suggest is that we pass this, uh, amendment to the, uh, MDP. Move on, uh, deal with the issues of, uh, policy. And then as time moves on and we see, uh, how our city develops. And, uh, to the point, we don't want to continue to build the city of the past. We want to build the city of the future. And then, uh, and then when, uh, lands to the west of, uh, Kirk Creek come up for development. And there's a, uh, a need for more, uh, residential land than fair enough at that time. But as it stands today, we want to make a change to our community. And part of that is that we want to shift the tax burden away from our residents onto a, a broader, uh, base, uh, that includes, uh, industrial and commercial. So, and that's part of what flourish is all about. And so, uh, I'm, I'm hoping council, uh, supports this.
All right. Anyone else have any comments? Council Brumansky.
Okay, um, I will make comment that I, I know there's been, uh, word of a lot of, you know, speaking to the public about what type of development they want in the city, but I've never answered any of those surveys. A lot of people have told me they've never answered any of those surveys and they don't have any idea. I guess there hasn't been portrayed, portrayed what type of industrial we're even looking at, and you might get a different response from that. We have people here that want to do something that's needed in the near future. And we're blocking them because of the plan to change our city to an industrial corridor that will help our tax base. So, um, I just think we're missing some of the development on the by sticking to our guns, as Council Broadhead would say on, on maintaining that this has to be industrial and then trying to find that industrial. So I'll be voting against this one. Thank you.
Council Hughes.
Well, thank you. So I'm going to be voting in favor of this because I appreciate what all of the speakers came and gave us their opinions and their concerns. And the document is as, as good as it could have been when it ran it forward. That doesn't mean it's perfect or there doesn't need tweaking. But the intention of this NDP amendment is specifically to address the annexation lands and specifically just, just, just the map and get this completed. So we've met our requirements with the MRB, et cetera, to acknowledge that we have these lands in our boundaries and that we, um, have plans for them. And whatever the plans changed can, can be. We have them and we want to acknowledge that this is our complete picture in our MDP. So that is really the intention today. And the intention is not to say that we're trying to stifle development or try to stop any of the policy changes that may be for discussion in the future. And we can still have motions to that effect as early as like next month to say if we need to, but we'll have discussions with administration to see where things are going. And then see if there's any gaps that need to be addressed. Because I do think that this council is definitely focused on economic development and trying to get uh, to be flexible and, and putting considering all sides when we're trying to increase the industrial base. So I have no problems with trying to have that discussion, but as far as today goes, I don't want to have additional delays, the MDP and delaying it for months and trying to accomplish something which what we really need to do is have those amendments. And amendments need to be kind of thought through carefully and we won't be able to accomplish that goal tonight. So I think that I'm going to put in favor of this so that it comes to a complete picture and then we can discuss amendments after that. And that's, and that's why I'm very comfortable with this. I don't think we're trying to stop the development at all at this point. We're actually just trying to get this going and then we can have amendments after the policy is actually created. That's it.
Anyone else? All right, um, Council Hughes and Council Broadhead, uh, said it really well. Um, this is really about um, welcoming in the annexation lands. That's really what we're talking about today. Um, and putting that colors on the map and, and Council Hughes, when you said thoughtful amendments, that's bang on, right? We wouldn't want to be, um, we, we approach this on what we're going to the annex lands, not what we're doing with the current lands inside. Speaking to the three suggested changes, um, in the Miz lands, I, I, there was some suggestion that, you know, administrations change and people are gone and they won't remember that they said this world can move. Well, that's what a public hearings for. They've requested it. It's in writing our response that that line is just very high level. It's temporary. It can change at any time when you get more specific and lower in the elevation of, of planning. So I, I, I'm confident that we don't need to hold up the MDP tonight. That that, that land can, that line, that dotted line can be moved to accommodate, um, good development in that area based on good data. Uh, when, when it talks about the Krantz lands, um, I, I, I can see how residential on both sides of the creek would actually be, uh, quite good and quite positive for development. I just tried to figure out how that transition to industrial would look. I, I'm, the question, I can't remember who asked it about servicing. Was it you? And it's actually not as readily serviced as, as suggested. That kind of made me think, well, then let's just get the MVP done today. And, um, talk about those lands. We still have a long ways. We still have Rohit's lands. And then we have, um, the green part of Sherro that grants owns, get that done. And then we can talk about what the future looks like. And finally, on, um, on the what is it? I want to call it Coda. Good to go. It's going to be hard to get rid of Coda. Um, I have a feeling that as, as it was pointed out, um, warehousing is already allowed in our industrial lands. Like this is still needs to be flushed out and I'm very empathetic and understand what you guys want to build. You could put a gas, you said small commercial, but you could still do or solve small convenience. Some of that could probably go in, but I, I think what you're asking is going to be achieved, um, through the conversation. And if not, then the process is there. This, this process, um, and Counselor Broadhead and Counselor Hughes, you've probably seen it many times. Um, we make tweaks to the land use bylaw or whatever to accommodate one development. You know, we, this, this particular retailer, whatever wants to come in, we change it because that's exciting. And so that's possible. It's not going to be IKEA. I know you keep. Killing. So I don't want to, and the, and as, as, as empathetic and, and, and maybe excited about some of the prospects of what is proposed in Lakeview. Their request would hold up this, this absorption of the annexation lands for many months. And because we have to go back to EMRB for sure, maybe, okay. But more than that policy quick changes are coming and I don't want to wait for that, but, um, today, but I'm looking forward to it in the future. So, um, Council Broadhead, anything to close? Oh. Okay.
And I just wanted to say that I, I actually think we're all, I was going to say both, but I think all trying to accomplish the same.
Same thing, yeah.
Trying to get the MDP for the annex lands passed tonight. Uh, we're trying to accommodate the land user, landowners. Um, we're trying to attract more commercial industrial uh, to meet the needs of, of our tax paying residents and lowering, keeping taxes low. Uh, we are going to have many more discussions. I was pleased to hear from Adrian that they've had multiple discussions already with with the landowners and proponents here. So I think we're going to it's, to get to the finish line, we're going to need lots more of those discussions. And the fact that we're having them is, is good. And, and I can't think of anything more that is important to counsel than long term land use planning and associated tax split. And this will address that. So, um, that it's taken us two hours tonight or this afternoon to get to where we are and appreciate the presentations from the different representatives, uh, I think speaks to the importance of this. It, it, if we'd have rushed it and rubber stamped it, that would have not you know, been, been the right thing to do. I mean, we need to get this over the finish line. And then I think we also have the changes can, we both have the process that changes can be made and refined. And we have in practice done that in the past. So we, we have process and practice that will allow us to, I think, meet the developers uh, requests as we, as we move forward. So whether, whether that's the, the, uh, land on, on the west side of Carrot Creek or Cityport, uh, I am confident that through continued discussion and, and work that, uh, we'll, we'll get there. And for that reason, I, I'll be supporting this.
Council Broadhead, anything to close?
Nothing further, Madam Mayor.
Call for the vote. Voting's closed and that passes by majority with Council Brumansky opposed. Council Broadhead, third reading?
That by law, uh, I'll do the amendments here.
Oh, right. Yeah, I gotta pull up.
By law, one slash twenty twenty two is amended by making minor graphic updates to maps one through six.
Thank you. Uh, anything on that?
No, ma'am.
You're good?
Yep.
Anyone else? Call for the vote. And that one fails with Council Brumansky opposed. Passes. Sorry, I saw red.
That by law, one slash twenty twenty two is amended by changing the proposed glossary definition for the twenty twenty two north annexation area to refer to the correct reference map.
Anything on that?
No, ma'am.
All right. Call for the vote. Voting's closed. And that passes, uh, by majority of Council Brumansky opposed. And now we are on to third reading.
That by law, one slash twenty twenty two as amended, be read a third time.
All right. Anything else?
We've, uh, exhausted it.
Call for the vote. Voting's closed, passes by majority of Council Brumansky opposed. All right, um, Council, do we need to go back in camera for eleven point one at all? We're going to let Mr. Fletcher go home. Okay, so I need a motion. I'll go to you, Council Hughes. Um, eleven point two, and you got the correct point. Sections?
Yep, the council going camera for section twenty four point one A of FIP.
All right. Do you want to speak to that? So council knows what we're going in camera for, or are you just?
It's for council dialogue. We haven't had any for a while.
All right.
So, um, and it wasn't, and we normally have one a month and it wasn't scheduled for this month. So I just thought we should have that. That's it.
All right. Call. Call for the vote. Hands? That, I'm sure that's closed. I have this one. Yeah, yeah. I'll throw this in, uh, David's little slot. Okay. I'm are we, did we vote on that? Did it pass? Okay, I missed, I missed the coming up. That passes. We're in camera.